Welcome to the Planning Commission, October 11th, 2018. If I could ask Mr. Heschler to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Keldorf, here. Commissioner Wingate.
Present.
And Commissioner Heschler.
I'm here.
And Chair Baldino is absent.
Okay, thank you Venus. Now is a time for public communications related to city business only and for which the Planning Commission is responsible. Five minutes per person, thirty minutes total. Does anybody wish to address the Planning Commission at this time?
And Madam Vice Chair, you might want to tell the audience that this is not on any agenda items, so if there's something on the agenda, they can save their comments for that, that time.
Very good.
This is just non-agenda items.
Non-agenda, not agenda items if anybody would care to address the Planning Commission. Okay. Consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar.
We have the, the meeting, the minutes, and the.
Vehicle lifts.
We sure do. Are any call items from the consent calendar, or?
I'm dying to hear about vehicle lifts. I read it. So there's no additional report on them, then I'm fine.
Moved to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Moved and seconded in?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four one. Written communications. Are there any written communications other than what is in our agenda packet for this evening?
There were a few items, but they're related to the public hearings, and so we'll address those at that time.
Thank you very much. And now we will open item number H, new business, public hearing. Ordinance amending the city's current prohibition of marijuana-related land use.
H, what?
I think it's item three.
Where am I?
The remodel.
No.
Can I use this?
Sure, sure. You have to tap it every once in a while, so it stays a lot.
All right, my apologies. No wonder I only had one item. Here we go. New business, public hearing, the addition and the remodel of the building at the 147 Richmond Street. The applicant, Arnold Foster. Address is 147 Richmond Street. Will we have a staff report at this time?
Yes, we have a very brief staff report. This is the existing building at 147 Richmond Street, and this is what they're proposing to do with it. It's basically a new building built over the old building. It'll be a brick building now, which will be consistent with the Richmond Street District, which we'll get to that in a little bit. We'll get to it now. Buildings should be harmonious with the best examples of historic structures in the surrounding area, and key is the prevailing use of brick construction should be continued and respected with both new construction and renovations. This is right across the street from the one we dealt with last week, so same, same district, same rules. On the left there is the, is the ground floor. The white area in the middle is the footprint of the existing building, so you can see they're building a little bit on all the sides except for on the, on the Richmond Street side, which is on the right of this diagram, which would be the east side. So they're adding a little bit of square footage on the south. They're adding some architectural features on the north. That's pretty much it. And then they're going to build a whole second floor on top of that. Now here's the site plan. The building is over here. This is, I'm sorry, this is not very visible. Let me try something else here. There we go. Here's the building, and this is Richmond Street, and, and this one is Franklin Street, right along here. This is the parking lot to the west. It currently holds six spaces, but we're having one space here converted to a handicap accessible space, so that will kill one space, so we're down to five. The requirement for seven, they intend to purchase two in-lu parking spaces. And our recommendation is that you adopt the resolution approving this. Design review.
Can we see the elevation again?
Yep.
And was there an elevation also from, from Richmond?
There, there is. I didn't include it in the slideshow, sorry. It's just more brick stuff.
And do we have the internal?
We did. We looked at the internal. It's, this is one office, internal staircase, not, not an external staircase, not, let me say, it's entirely interior, so the upstairs is composed of, of an office and a workspace, as I recall, and.
How many people are going to work there?
That would be a question you can ask the applicant.
Okay.
So that concludes my report.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
All right, and now we will ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation or a report on this property, on this project. If you'll just come before the commission, introduce yourself.
And give us your address.
Arnold Foster, architect, 1205 Cabrillo Avenue, Venice, California, 90291.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Tell us a little about your project, real quick, real briefly.
The building is, as described, we kept the, the glass at the first level because of your rule with seventy-five percent glass, and we're, we're as tight to that as we can with providing structure to carry the, the second level. It's a clean little office building. The occupant load would be, the square footage divided by, I think, three hundred.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
It's a low occupant load on the building, and we provided parking, the current parking that shows, six parking on the plans, if you go back to the originally, the original plans, it shows six parking spaces and one handicap, but it's, it's not a real parking plan. There's not enough space to fit a real, or an up-to-date handicap space, so we lost one space with, with that. So that, that's why we need to purchase the other, the other sites. And we're trying to provide some bicycle parking on-site. That's really, whatever space is, is left over, that's adequate. We feel we can put one or two bicycles in there, and they'll be used in this case. And that's, that's pretty much, pretty much it.
How many people will be working in this office?
I.
Probably about five to seven.
Yeah.
It's a big space.
And this is part of the downtown specific plan, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the, all the glazing is really nice, all the, the big windows.
Right.
What do we see behind those windows? This is obviously not retail. This is an office environment?
This is an office environment, yes.
So desks and chairs or individual offices we're seeing through these windows?
Yes, and at the, at the Richmond side, it's really, that's really most likely the reception area. So you'd see that reception desk and, and, and that part. And then, and then if there's kind of a barrier behind that, you know, that's really further down the line in terms of design, but there's a barrier behind that, then that would be something that would be conducive to the public and, and the street, you know.
All right. So one of my concerns when I saw the elevation, and the reason I asked for the, if you had the Richmond side elevation, is it seems that a lot of the articulation is, is missing when you've got very boxy. And so can you tell us about some of the detail around the window? I mean, is there, is there some pop-outs or anything that give the, give the space, or give the facade, rather, some, some?
Right. The, the windows, because we're using a, a deeper wall, a six-inch wall, and the windows are mounted back, then we have the opportunity to create some shadow and some articulation around the windows, you know, mimicking and taking a cue from the historic building across the street. So we'd like to build out some layers. It's a twenty-five-foot lot, so everything we do is really a reduction in space to the, to the building. You know, on the, on the property line side, the common property line side, we'll probably end up with an eight-inch block wall, so there's eight inches instead of six. We start losing inches all the way, and we'd like to keep all of the building on property, obviously, so you're an inch away from that, and then if you have the facade of the building is, we'll say, two or three inches back from that, then, then we get to move the brick in and out a little bit, you know, and try to create some, some shadow. And, and really look, look to the historic building for other, other cues. So we have that, that large, if you can see that elevation, yeah, you see we have, above we have that pretty much cornice at the top, and that would be popped out, we'll say, an inch and a half or two inches, creates a shadow. And the same thing around the, around the windows. The only thing that, that could change in the future is the, the brick around the windows would become like a limestone or, or, or a sandstone, and that would give us a little bit more articulation, but that's really a function of cost, you know. So it would be something that would be compatible with everything, and.
So there is a little articulation around the windows.
As much, as much as we can, and at the corners, that's why we set, we took away that angled entry, we set everything back so that really gives you a little bit more and a nicer scale for the, for the building. And so that, we, we took an active look at that, and then, then with the existing building being set back that foot and a half, then you, then you get those, these arches at the, at the first level, and that helps.
Sure.
Articulation.
Can you go back to the original, the existing structure?
This one?
So it's definitely an improvement, so.
Yeah.
Nice, nice work.
Thank you.
You said that the bike racks will be used. Do you have people that usually bike to work?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very nice. Any other, any other questions for the applicant? I had just a question for you, Greg, that I wanted to address one more time. The architect used the term historic building across the street, and I was asking you a little earlier today about, are any of the buildings along this corridor in the downtown on Richmond Street, especially this 1-200 block, are they historic buildings?
They're old buildings, but I, I do believe that the city has not designated them as historic, nor has the state or federal.
Okay. Just want to make sure for the record that there are no historic buildings. Yeah, there's a story that I won't bore anybody with about the neighbor next door, but I do agree that this is a tremendous improvement. It should be very nice.
I, I think of the Richmond Bar and Grill as being sort of historic, but other than that, right.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the building I was referencing, actually. Okay. With that, do we, we will then have the rest of the comments coming from the dais. Anybody, anything else we would choose to chat about, about this particular?
Exciting to see the parking in Luffy applied for the first time.
I agree.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that.
Nice work on that.
Madam Vice Chair, just a point, procedure, this is actually a public hearing, so you might want to just open the public hearing, make sure that there isn't anyone else from the public, and then close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. King. I'll open the public hearing for one more round, if anybody else would like to address the commission on this particular item. And seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you. And now comments from the dais. Go right ahead, Michelle.
No, that was it.
I think it's a great addition to Richmond Street. I think it's going to look great.
So do I, and I'd like to approve that motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2853, approving EA-1221, colon DDR, number 18-01.
I'll second.
We have a motion in favor and a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Moved and carried, four one. And we will move on to, no, you know, I got it. This is, I'm, this little, these little phones are amazing. We'll move on to continued business. This is a public hearing that we'll be opening, reopening again. Item number four, an ordinance amending the city's current prohibition of marijuana-related land use. Address is citywide. Applicant is the city of El Segundo, and if we could get a staff report, please.
We, we resubmitted the, the draft ordinance according to the direction that we got from, from the commission last time. We took out a few words to remove some ambiguity, and there was additional research that we did that was explained in the staff report regarding CBD and, and research and development. So that, so really it was a very minor change, and we are relying on the report that was made last time then, and we're asking for action tonight.
Okay, Mr. McLean, that report, we, you struck out a couple of words from the original, and do we have any discussion up here? We need to open public hearing? Do we need to open this for public hearing? Or, right now, I suppose we could actually ask if we have any questions for staff at this particular time, and let's start with that.
I do have a couple of questions that might just be my inability to read the legal language around it, but, so we talk about research using industrial hemp, and that it could be allowed with a license from the state agricultural department. Would that same thing apply then? In theory, in El Segundo, you could do research, not with the plant leaf, but with the industrial hemp if you had a license from the state.
If you're, if you're working directly with the Department of Agriculture, or if you are working directly with an institution of higher learning that's been authorized to do that sort of research.
Okay. And then in the, I know part of what was added, I think, was the word food relating to CBD oil, is that, would the same thing apply to lotions, topical products? I'm just thinking of some things that are sold locally that may not be caught by that in that bucket.
Well, to, to at least partly answer your question with regard to food additives, that, that is not prohibited by this ordinance, although the state public health department has issued an advisory saying that those additives are actually prohibited, so irrespective of what this ordinance says. So that partly answers your question.
So, so the state says it's not legal, but it's not prohibited here, and that, that addresses things like creations, CBD, smoothie?
Well, creations, products, if they contain CBD, for instance, our local laws would not prohibit it, but the federal and state laws would.
So many questions, but not relevant, maybe.
All right, I have a question. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, they're, they're relevant questions. It's a, it's a worthwhile discussion to have.
On page fifty, there was a change made to the title cannabis accessories. And from what I read, because I missed the last meeting, so bring me up to date if I'm incorrect, the, the company in town that is connected with cannabis growing, et cetera, wanted to be able to design packaging for their marijuana products. And so some things have been changed in this paragraph. One of the things that was changed was storing. So I wonder why storing was crossed out. That means that storing is allowed in the city of El Segundo, the way I interpret it.
Yeah, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission, so if I recall the, the discussion correctly, one of the issues that was talked about was cardboard boxes, and the cardboard boxes were going to be used to package cannabis off-site, outside of El Segundo, but they did store the cardboard boxes in El Segundo. So the speaker expressed concerns that the cardboard boxes would fall into the definition of cannabis accessories, which are equipment, products, or materials used for storing cannabis. So the changes that were made to the definition of cannabis accessories pursuant to the direction of the commission was to allow for the cardboard boxes, as I understood it, the commission wanted to allow the cardboard boxes. So we struck storing, which would allow the cardboard boxes to be stored in the city of El Segundo.
Now, it wasn't a complete, the commission didn't, everybody on the commission didn't want you to do that, because I came from a different perspective.
Right.
And as you read it, the term packaging has not been removed, therefore, according to the discussion you just, example you just gave us, they couldn't store their boxes, which is a package that's used, again, off-site.
I, I understand, Madam Vice Chair, what you're saying. I think I would, I would interpret packaging to refer more to the packaging of the cannabis itself as for retail purposes.
But that's what, that's, that, as he explained it last week, or two weeks ago, was what they do.
Right.
Or what they were going to store.
Right.
So that would be packaging, packaging for cannabis.
Exactly. For retail purposes.
Right.
I'm thinking like a plastic wrapper, or some sort of box that the.
No, no, no. If, if I may, this word appears in a long list of verbs, and so you have to look at it in that sense and not as a noun. So it's not the packaging as a, as a material object, it's the act of packaging marijuana that is prohibited.
Well, it says, if we take out all the words before all of the activities related to this, and we just say cannabis accessories means any equipment, products, or materials of any kind which are used or designed for use in packaging, repackaging, or storing. So products or materials of every, any kind that are used or designed for use in, all right, so we're talking about materials or products that are designed for use in harvesting, for use in manufacturing, for use in compounding, for use in converting. So anything that would be designed for use in packaging would be prohibited. And for use in storing, so it's kind of.
I would, I would, in my opinion, a cardboard box is used more for storing than for packaging, because I think of the end product that you see on the shelf as the packaging of the product. So this ordinance, as, as presented to you, would not allow them to have the materials for the packaging in the city of El Segundo, which, there was discussion about that, but this would not allow them to have the cardboard boxes for the storage of cannabis, of cannabis product.
All right, so you're saying that cardboard boxes could not be stored in El Segundo?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That was my, I'm sorry, that they could be used, they could be stored in, cardboard boxes are allowed, materials for packaging for the end product would not be allowed in El Segundo.
Okay, so they could design a box in which cannabis would be placed, they could apply a label to the box, they could have the boxes here, but if the, the product was going to be packaged in those boxes, it would have to be, have to be done somewhere else. Is that my correct interpretation?
I think there's a difference between designing the packaging, which would be allowed. I think if you have the physical packaging that the cannabis would be actually sold within, in the city of El Segundo, I think that would be not allowed under the ordinance. But the cardboard boxes, I don't think are packaging as much as more storage of the product.
Or I think of it as like a mock-up. It's a mock final package.
Well, he used, he used the term that the boxes were small, and then that's what, wherever they get packaged, that's what those, they get sold in, these small boxes. And then that's what, wherever they get packaged, that's what those, they get sold in, these small boxes.
Okay.
And so according to this, as it's written, can they or can they not do that?
If it's for the end packaging, for the actual sale, it probably would fall under the definition of packaging.
Right, which means they cannot.
Yeah, so if that's, if the, if, I thought it was larger cardboard boxes that were actually going to ship.
No, they were small.
So the smaller.
Small boxes that get sold for retail, retail sales.
Okay, so if, if the commission wants to allow it in El Segundo, then it would have to strike the word packaging.
And just to clarify, that does not mean that you are packaging cannabis in El Segundo, because you are not allowed to have cannabis in El Segundo. So it's really just the material that we're talking about.
It's an empty container. It's a shampoo bottle without the shampoo.
That's correct, because this is a definition of accessories, not the actual product.
So, so rolling papers would also fall under that same category then, right?
As would vape pens, which I know are sold in many, many places all around town.
Right.
And bongs and pipes and, yeah. I'm, I'm more inclined to keep it as it is, if not actually ask for how it was originally written and presented to us a couple of weeks ago. And striking the term storing under cannabis accessories, I'm not sure what that, what is it that we're actually eliminating there? What are we actually saying?
I, you know, I apologize to the commission, I misunderstood at the last meeting. I thought it was larger cardboard boxes that would store the materials. I thought they had larger cardboard boxes for storage purposes. That's why I, I deleted the word storing. But if it was smaller end product packaging, then I would say that's more packaging rather than storing. So I apologize, that's, that's my mistake, I misunderstood.
So, so keeping, keeping the strikeout storing in there, what is it you think you're eliminating?
Materials for storing other types of accessories for cannabis.
Like, like all the little boxes that go in the big boxes?
Exactly, exactly. That's what, in my mind, that's what I thought he was describing, so I apologize. If, if you're not concerned about storing, we can restore it. And then we can, I mean, it's, it's really up to the pleasure of the planning commission. I, I, these are all very, you know, very small details, but it's important.
All right, so well, why, why don't we take this opportunity and can we open this up for a public comment? If anybody would like to address the planning commission on this particular item, we'll open it up for a public hearing at this point. And if not, we'll close public hearing and the rest of the comments then, we'll continue up here on the dais.
For clar, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's all right.
For clarification purposes, I want to say that I visited a marijuana dispensary in Oregon and talked to the employees about their process and their laws and got some background information. I didn't buy anything. I didn't get any free samples. And had a conversation with a friend of a friend who is an inspector of dispensaries for the state of Oregon. Well, I, I can't see anything wrong with storing little packages as long as all the packaging goes on someplace else, so that we're not encouraging any cannabis being in the city at all. And so I'm going to say to our attorney, let's write it that way.
So you're okay with.
Why would we do that? Why would we just want to write it that way?
Well, I mean, if they're just going to design packaging and have the packaging, you know, made and stored here, and then the, the actual putting of the product in the box goes on somewhere else, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to speak for the Tyson Ranch folks, but it seems to me what they do is they, they design the packaging. They send it to the printer, the printer prints it, they send it back to them and they're stored, ready to go, but they're empty. They're, they're, they're not full of any cannabis items. And then they send those packages out to their, their manufacturer, their fulfillment house, whatever you call that. And so I think we discussed as a group that that's probably okay, because that's really no different than a web firm doing a website design for these same sorts of companies. And as long as there's no actual cannabis on site, that seemed to be okay, at least, at least with me.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's what I'm understanding, because if you're going to design a package, you want to see that end product. You know, the designer wants to see it. So you would have it delivered to the designer and the designer would say, oh, no, you spelled that wrong, send it all back.
Now, that's not exactly what, what I think I'm saying that I would like to see a, a different thought process about, because you open up the door a little bit, it has nothing to do with what they could actually do on a computer and design it, have a mock-up and see it, to actually store it would.
Store.
The little boxes?
Without any cannabis in it.
No, no, clearly no cannabis in it at all. Then, then to me, opens the gate up for that next level of, of an issue when it comes to a marketing or a packaging, whether it's for something that's a little, a little further. And I just think that, you know, we live in, we live in a community, it has nothing to do, if we continue to say no, a hundred percent no as a city, it has nothing to do with the personal rights of people that want to do what they want to do in the privacy of their home. And that's perfect. But as a city, to then allow as a use, a business that would then allow the storing of something to do with the promotion of marijuana is not good in my, in my eyes. And I, I think that that's a, that, that, that's the problem that I have. I think you as a parent, I think that the city should say, no, 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 no.
And I, yeah, and I completely respect that opinion. And certainly as a parent, I would love to take vape pens and underage drinking and cigarettes. I mean, across from Richmond Street, you can get, you know, school, you can get cigarettes and liquor, but, so I don't. I a hundred percent agree cannabis should not be sold in El Segundo, and that's agreed upon. But I think there's a potential for overreach in terms of discouraging businesses with something that is legal in the state of California. And I don't, even with the cannabis accessories, I actually am not sure how you're going to enforce that now you can't sell anything used for the purpose of smoke, smoking or vaping when you sell tobacco and it's the same accessories. I just, I don't know how we police that.
Well, I don't either. And that, but, but we don't police it by embracing it and then allowing it is, is the first thing, in my mind. You know, you have to just say no, we've got just say no to drugs, we've got reach out against drugs, we have all these things. To me, sends a message to the young person today that the business acumen in this community, if they allow that, it's a, it's a mixed message to the kids. It's up to you to tell your children, not the city of El Segundo to tell them. They're, they're, in other words, the city of El Segundo in essence would be saying that it's okay. From a business standpoint, that we can do this. It's just, it's not going to change anything the way things are now. That gentleman that spoke to us last week, he's going to continue to do what he does, you asked him point blank. He'll make accommodations and he'll do it just probably across the border. He's not going to move, and I don't know what the benefit is to this community anyway. What is the bigger benefit?
I don't, I.
I know, I know, I know it's crazy, and again, it's a.
It's not crazy, it's, it's absolutely not crazy. You're a hundred percent entitled to.
We all are, we all are, everybody is, totally.
And I think if we were having a conversation about alcohol or smoking, I would actually be more leaning in your, you know, in your direction.
But since it's not, yeah, since, since we know it's a drug, that's the first thing. It's not legal everywhere, yes, it's legal in the state of California.
Tobacco and alcohol are drugs.
That's right.
They are, they are, but they're already here. They're already here.
And so is marijuana. It's been here for three thousand years.
Yeah.
Or, or longer, yes.
I get it, I get, I understand it. And again, it's not a, it's not a personal thing that I have a judgment against people that smoke pot or grow it. What do I care? I don't care, it's perfectly fine. And used in many, many ways, we all know that, for, for, for very good reasons. I just have a problem with the city allowing, in a business environment, not that they can't run a business, own a building,
And that's why we're here, we're here, we're here for the, for the business use of this and the commercial use.
And land use, exactly.
And land use, exactly.
Right. So I'm, 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 well, I think you know how I feel about it. And I, I think at some point, we're going to have to come to a close in order to move forward. And I'm okay with it as it reads, striking storing, because it doesn't make any difference, that word, from the way we were presented two weeks ago. It's still a hundred percent no. And yet, anybody could open up a creative office space and do what they need to do in a marketing firm on their computers. And I think that's perfectly within their, their right to do that. And it's perfectly within the right for people to do what they do in the privacy of their home. I, I, I just think we're crossing a line when we, as a city, allow as a business, a business use in, in that respect. And I, I, if I, if I made a motion in favor of approving it as it's presented, am I going to get a unanimous vote? Or am I going to get a vote?
I'm not sure that storing, I kind of think to Carol's point, I feel like that word might not be what the business who came and spoke to us was after. And without them here, it's a little hard to guarantee that. But I don't know that striking storing does us any good. I think the question is if we want to strike packaging.
Yeah, I, again, I apologize for that, that was an oversight on my part. Really, if you want to allow what the public speaker spoke out last meeting, you would want to strike packaging.
Yeah, I'd talk about that.
And maybe potentially repackaging. I apologize, I, I misunderstood. Storing, it, it's up to the commission, you can either, you know, leave it as struck or restore it. But it sounds like the real issue is just the packaging and possibly repackaging.
Yeah, if we eliminate packaging and repackaging.
And I'd like to talk about one more thing, kind of take this in a different direction. And I know all these nice people are here for, you know, the short-term rentals, so pardon us while we talk about pot. You know, last time we spoke about this, I brought up the question of medical cannabis research. And let me be clear, I have no interest in pot shops in town. I don't want retail, I don't want kids having access, I don't want adults. I mean, there's, it's easy enough to get marijuana in this town, we don't have to do it here in El Segundo. But I do want to talk about one thing that's very important to me. I have personally had, have three or four friends and family members who have gone through very painful cancer and in the, in the final hours actually turned to cannabis to help relieve symptoms. And it sort of, it sort of made me think twice about it. And the November, I'm sorry, the October issue of Consumer Reports, you know I'm old because I read Consumer Reports. It's actually very timely, the, the topic here is a new cannabis cure for pain, and it's a question mark. And I want to just read a couple of things out of here, just to kind of, to talk about research. And this is related strictly to medical, clinical cannabis use. Last year, the National Institute of Health, and this, I'm quoting from this article, "Last year, the National Institute of Health awarded a hundred and forty million toward cannabis research, with fifteen million going to CBD studies. Recent studies from Johns Hopkins finds potential health benefits of cannabis for epilepsy, arthritis, anxiety, depression, PTSD, and relief from the side effects of chemotherapy. Researchers from Johns Hopkins and UC San Diego are also studying the effects of cannabis to reduce opioid addiction, with findings suggesting that cannabis is a safer alternative to opioids and other substance abuse." I don't know if any of you saw Sixty Minutes last, last week where they talked, I mean, a guy just went to jail for opioid prescriptions in Florida, and it, it's just opioid use is through the roof, it's insane. Johns Hopkins and UC San Diego are, are suggesting that cannabis might be a better solution to substance abuse. "In July, the FDA approved for the first time a prescription drug with CBD as its active ingredient. It's called Epidiolex, which cuts seizures by about forty percent in people with a particular devastating form of epilepsy. The NIH believes the approval of Epidiolex will open a path to even more research and funding." The reason that's important to me is we are, we are the city where ideas come together. We have Dr. Patrick Soon trying to cure cancer. We have big innovation in this, in this town when it comes to medical research. And I, I don't want to be on the wrong side of history when these decisions are made. I understand federally, it's a, it's a, an illegal drug, I totally respect that. It's now legal in California. To me, I just, I, I don't want to miss the medical benefits that we don't even know exist yet. And if we completely shut down the research, we never get to participate in that. And I do believe El Segundo is where ideas take off. I know it's new, uncharted territory. I know we're probably, a, a similar topic might be stem cell research ten years ago, when it was a moral issue, it was a religious issue, people were saying, oh my God, we're going to clone people and what's, we should never have stem cell research. Look what that's done, and it's become an entire industry and it's saving lives now. So, sorry about the rant, but I just want to make sure that we don't miss the potential upside of an industry we know very little about.
All right, in, in this, the documents that we received for this meeting, it says, "What forms of industrial hemp will not be allowed in food?" And it's seeds and oil and hemp seed oil. And so there is research being done using CBD, which is not the intoxicating part of marijuana.
Correct.
So, you know, it's, it's a brand-new world out there, and I think you're right, that there are a lot of benefits. But we're not really talking about doing that research right here and now, because it's a class-one drug in, in the feds and you have to have special licenses to do this kind of research. I think we need to really decide what we want to do with this narrow, little section of this. So I would suggest packaging, repackaging should be struck. And, I don't know, storing? What do you think about leaving storing in, as per our discussion?
It's up to the pleasure of the planning commission.
Okay, well then, why don't we take out packaging, repackaging?
Why don't we not take out packaging and repackaging?
You want packaging in there?
No, I'm going to leave it there. You strike it means that it's allowable.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I think we should leave it in there.
Yeah. So we're talking about leaving, well, about striking storage?
It's already struck. Whether we restore storing, I don't think makes a hill of beans difference. Because storing.
It's just storing the packages, if it's relating to packaging.
But if it's related to accessories.
Right.
Yes, yes, cannabis accessories.
There's no storage of cannabis. No cannabis physically on the property at all.
No, 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 it's not about the cannabis, it's about the storing of the things that support the sale of cannabis. And so I'm not in favor of striking packaging.
Okay, then let's not strike packaging. I make, I make a motion that we take the strike on storing out of this ordinance.
And I would make a motion to suggest that we strike packaging?
Well, then packaging is allowed.
Yes, I, that, that would be my opinion.
So Madam Vice Chair, so there's, it sounds like there may be potentially two competing motions.
I think so.
So what I would recommend is, why don't, why don't we take it one thing at a time?
Okay.
Why don't we just deal with packaging and repackaging? And just to be clear, maybe it's an easier way to say it, you know, do you want to allow the packaging in the city of El Segundo? You know, yes or no? So maybe the, the maker of the motion.
How about, if we, instead of saying packaging, how about packaging design?
Designs done on a computer.
Yeah, I know. That would be forbidden, so.
I mean, to the vice chair's point, you know, she's okay with them designing on a computer. It's just the actual physical packaging material that she doesn't want to allow in the city of El Segundo. So I, I would recommend the commission maybe parse it out, maybe, you know.
All right, so let's, let's, let's get a little better feel on, since we do have a motion to remove the term packaging from cannabis accessories. And Michelle actually did just make a motion.
So did I.
Then your motion stands first to remove the term packaging?
No, I did not, no. My motion was to remove the strikeout from the word storage.
Storage, okay. All right, so that being our first motion to reinstate storing under cannabis accessories. under cannabis accessories, and then is, is there a second on that? To return the word "storing" back under cannabis accessories, which means you cannot...
That's right.
Store.
You cannot have equipment products or materials of any kind which are used or designed for use in storing cannabis, or cannabis products.
Or accessories, or accessories.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Then I will second Carol's adding storing back into this original paragraph.
And I'm sorry, to clarify, storing would include rolling papers and vape pens, if you're storing those accessories?
Yes.
So, the 7-Eleven who carries rolling papers can never, can then not carry rolling papers.
Or they can't carry the boxes that the rolling papers are in.
The rolling papers would probably be covered under other components of this. When I think of storing, I'm thinking actually the physical storing of the products within the storage containers, if you will. I think storing is a little bit broader, I, I think bigger than just the actual products.
You get shipments of paraphernalia that come in offshore, you pick them up at Long Beach, and you have an office in Smoky Hollow, you can't store that stuff there, even though it's going to go to the packaging off-site somewhere. You can't store that stuff there. That, to me, it would be storing.
Yeah, materials for storing.
Or bongs, or anything that's going to be related.
I think, I think bongs would probably be covered under other verbs and within that sentence as well.
Yeah, because you've got a good point, where you talked about rolling papers and bongs and vaping, because it says, "Any equipment products or materials of any kind which are used or designed for use in smoking or vaporizing cannabis."
Exactly. So storing is...
But clearly, those things get used for tobacco and, and other things, so yeah, so...
So the brand-new cigar shop that's going to have rolling papers, we're going to say, "Sorry, you can't do that, you can't have those there."
Well, it, it...
If it's, only if it's for cannabis.
It's not, that's not for cannabis.
But I, and I honestly don't know the answer to this, what's the difference?
There is no difference.
Okay, so...
There is no difference.
It's the same product, it's just...
Now, maybe, maybe it's their word, and they say, "Sorry."
But from an enforcement perspective, we would have to prove that it is used for cannabis.
Right, exactly.
We can't just go after any product, just because it potentially, I mean, that was my issue two weeks ago with the speaker, is that we're not going to prohibit cardboard boxes in the city of El Segundo.
Right.
We would have to prove that it's connected to the cannabis in order to, in order to trigger the ordinance, so...
This is just cannabis-related, that's all we're talking. So it is, a, a motion was made, I seconded the motion, and those in favor of returning the term "storage" back to the original paragraph, say aye. Those in favor, say aye, aye. Those opposed?
Aye. I know.
It's okay, that's all right.
I know, but we wanted to have a motion.
Yeah, that's all right.
All right, so, I, there's one for approval?
Mm-hmm.
And then, I didn't hear?
I'm, I'm going to be a nay.
I'm a nay.
Yeah, no, okay, so three, no, two, one, yes. So the term "storing" continues to stay struck from the original paragraph, that will stay struck. The second question, or the second motion you had on the floor, was to remove the term "packaging, repackaging" from the paragraph. Michelle made a motion, and, is there a second?
I will second that.
There's moved in second, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But that means that they can package marijuana here?
No.
No, no.
They can design the packaging, and they can have the product that it's...
They can have the box, they can have the empty shampoo container.
Aye.
One, two, three, those opposed, no. Three, yes, one, no, to remove packaging and repackaging.
Right.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on this? We still need to move through the actual ordinance to approve it as amended.
So, just so we're all clear, packaging and repackaging will be struck in the ordinance that's presented to council, and storing will also remain struck.
No.
No, will be removed.
Storing is not struck.
Storing is...
I think Jay and I are thinking one thing.
So there's a point of confusion, because the motion was to reinstate storing, but that motion was not approved, because it was...
All right, you can leave it out.
But, do we want to clarify that?
Yes, no, you're right, you're right.
Storing remains struck.
Do we need to redo a motion?
That means that storing is allowed.
That means that storing is allowed, right. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, that's okay.
Right. It was three, because the motion was to reinstate storing, and that failed.
Yes.
It was voted against at three, three, three no, three yes.
So storing is allowed, packaging and repackaging.
Right.
Was struck.
Right.
Or allowed.
Right, by strike...
Right, storing, packaging...
Exactly.
Right, storing, packaging, and repackaging is all going to be struck in the ordinance. So now, all we need to do is the commission to make a motion and approve the resolution recommending the council adopt the ordinance as, as amended.
There's no ordinance number, so...
It's the resolution recommending approval.
I make a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance, amending Title 15, Chapter 13B of the El Segundo Municipal Code prohibiting cannabis-related uses and activities in all zone-specific plan areas of the city.
And do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. It is three to one, and the motion passed. Okay, we get to move on.
At last. You guys are still here.
Sorry for the delay, everybody. We will move on now to item number five, Zone Text Amendment to Allow and Regulate Short-Term Rentals in the City's Residential Zoning Districts. Consideration and possible action regarding approval of environmental assessment number EA-1180, Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA-17-01, to allow short-term rentals through a short-term rental unit permit process in the city's residential zoning districts. And applicant of City of El Segundo, and do we have a staff report, please? Mr. Eduardo.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, no Chairwoman, sorry, Chairperson, sorry. Don't want that coming back at me in twenty years. Anyhow, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to keep this brief, I think really the, the overarching point here is to, is to get some dialogue, and some, some discussion going on between the commission and staff, and hopefully ultimately getting some, some direction, feedback and direction to, as to how to proceed with this. So, to provide a little bit of, 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 of history for, for the benefit of, of, of the public and some of the new commissioners, we, you know, this topic kind of goes back to, back to 2016, late 2016, when this was raised by, by the public, and, and the city council ended up looking at this. And they actually, you know, discussed the, you know, the, the activity of short-term rentals during one of their plant, city council meetings in, in November 2016. And at that time, the, the council, you know, was, you know, non-committal about it, and, and about regulating or banning, and as a matter of fact, just kind of directed staff to, to, to look into the, into the, into the use, come back with, with something, come back with some sort of process, if, if, whether to regulate or, or ban, so that, that's kind of what, what had occurred back then. Since then, we've been part of the South Bay Cog, the Council of Governments, they have a, a, a smaller subgroup of, of, that, that discusses these short-term rentals, and you know, we hear from other cities in terms of how their regulations and bans have been going on, and, and what they've done, and, and some of the pitfalls and, and shortfalls of, of, you know, going with bans or, or regulations. We also conducted a community ser, community survey back last summer, we had, we had it on the city's website for several weeks, we did that through Survey Monkey and got some feedback through that process as well. And so all this kind of helped us formulate, you know, a recommendation of the Planning Commission, which we then took to, to, to you before, or came before you last summer. And at that time, the Planning Commission actually officially adopted a, 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 a resolution recommending a, that the city council adopt a process for short, to allow for short-term rentals. And in the meantime, we also took this to the Chamber of Commerce and to EDAC as well, and they kind of felt that, you know, same thing, you know, it would kind of be unfair to the lodging industry in town, especially with TOT, and so they kind of put them on a level playing field to, you know, to, you know, in, in all fairness, and to allow these short-term rentals to operate, provided that there's, you know, some tax collection, and again, kind of putting them on an even playing field with, with the lodging industry, hotel industry in town. We then took that to the council in November of, of last year, and went back to them in January. And at that time, and I should also say, even during the Planning Commission hearings, you know, there were quite a few people that came out, many of, many of the folks that are here tonight, actually, with issues that have cropped up with an existing short-term rental over on Virginia, which, you know, obviously is a thorn in everyone's side there, so that's, that's pretty obvious. So, you know, hearing that, that, the, the community, the, the council at that point said, "You know what, let's, let's put a hold on this, let's kind of put this, kind of table this for a second, let's look at what other means we can use in order to, to, to kind of stem this, this type of activity," because, you know, it was a party house. So, with that, they directed staff to come up with, you know, some sort of party house type ordinance, which ultimately was done earlier this year, back in June of this year, actually, and went into effect in, in late July. So now, we're kind of back to the Planning Commission, you know, we've kind of done all this research, we've, you know, we've passed this party house ordinance, and now we're, you know, we're kind of hitting the reset button to say, "Okay, you know what, let's, let's, let's have this dialogue, let's have this, this, this information session with the community, with, with the Planning Commission, and kind of see, you know, which direction we, we should really be going in." A couple of terms that I, terminology that I'm going to be using in, in my brief presentation is, it relates to, you know, short-term, what constitutes short-term, right? So, in, in, in our, in our realm, it's, it's occupancy of less than thirty days, consecutive thirty days. When we talk about a short-term rental, typically that's going to refer to a, a, a unit that is being rented out, so the entire unit, that the owner's not present. And then there's be other terms like home sharing, which, which opposite to short-term rental, the, the, the owner resides on-site. And typically what those include will be whether, you know, because they reside on-site, they're going to, they might be renting out a bedroom in, in their house, or if they have an ADU, then it'd be an ADU or, or a second unit, right? So that's kind of the terminology that I'll be using throughout, and probably will all be using.
Eduardo, the audience might want to know what an ADU is.
ADU is an accessory dwelling, it is.
And that differs from a guest house, in that a guest house typically does not have a kitchen? Is that correct language? Because, because I, through some of the paper, you see people saying, "Do it in a guest house, do, you know, no ADU," I mean, there's, they're drawing a distinction.
Yeah, it, it's, it refers to what used to be called a granny flat. The, the distinction and the definitions are all kind of blurred. You can have a guest house without a kitchen, but you can't have an ADU without one.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, great. So, in, in our research, and, and a lot, a lot of this research, you know, started a long time ago, you know, again with the cog, but also doing, staff doing its own independent research, you know, we looked at other cities and what other cities have done historically, and, and where, you know, where they've been at, where they're at today. And, and a lot of them, you know, you'll see a lot of cities, you know, they kind of go, you know, one way or the other, they have, you know, bans, and then there's a lot of cities that allow for short-term rentals. You know, typically, some of the vacation areas like Big Bear and Palm Springs, you know, this is not something new to them, something that's, you know, always, so, you know, I looked at that, those types of cities, because, again, those are the things that, these are uses that, you know, have been pretty commonplace in their, in their towns for a number of years. There's a lot of cities out there like us, which, you know, really don't have an ordinance, you know, one way or another, they're kind of, you know, it's, it's, they're silent in our code, and if you look at our code, which is, you know, permissive code, if it's not indicated, then by de facto it's prohibited. But there are certain cities, such as Manhattan Beach or Adondo, that have actually, you know, adopted bans that actually specify that. So like, for example, they, they were a type of city, like Manhattan Beach, was a city in which, again, has a permissive code, it wasn't indicated as being permitted, so by de facto it's prohibited, they took the extra step to adopt an ordinance that expressly prohibits it. So, that's why you see in, in that first column at the left, expressly banned, those are cities that have actually adopted bans that expressly prohibit the activity. And then there's some cities that allow for home shares, and some that, like I said, the full gamut of, of short-term rentals, including short, home sharing as well. So to dive into that information a little deeper, so, as I indicated, Manhattan Beach at one time had, you know, the, you know, was kind of silent on it. In 2015, they officially adopted a ban, an ordinance to ban the activity. Just recently, though, and I, as I included in, in the, in the packet, there's a lot of discussion there in our neighboring city about allowing these short-term rentals in some sort of fashion. So they're currently studying the, the issue, you know, and speaking with staff over there, you know, there's a lot of things, obviously, that, that they're contemplating, just like us, that we've been doing probably longer than they have, and so, so they're currently studying the issue, and will possibly looking at allowing them. And, you know, as you probably read in the newspaper, you know, they seem to have a, a good pulse on, on, on what's going on out there, so it looks like there'll be something coming soon, before their, Manhattan Beach's Planning Commission and City Council. City of West Hollywood, again, that was pretty interesting, you have a, a citywide ban that was passed back in 2015. They, subsequent to that, they ended up kind of loosening it up a little bit, and they do allow home sharing in single-family residential units and in condominiums, so in essence, owner-occupied type of, of situations. They still continue the practice of banning in apartment complexes, and a lot of that is due to their, you know, to their housing issues, and, you know, that's a city that's really critical in terms of anything that, that, that can offset the, the rental market there. So they continue to ban it in apartments, but they do allow for home sharing in single-family and condos. City of Santa Monica, so, they historically have had a, a ban, and so they actually clarified an existing ban, if you will, on vacation rentals, and that occurred back in 2015 as well. However, in doing so, they, they did allow for home sharing only, so they do allow for that activity, again, that activity is where you have, the owner is present on-site. Couple more of the cities that we looked at in more detail, Pacific Grove. So they actually went back to 2010, they, where they, they just allowed short-term rentals, you know, throughout the city. And I think, and over, over time, it started becoming, started becoming an issue, especially with the neighbors in the area, you know, raising the same issues that, that we hear, that we've heard here, too, from, from, from our residents as well. So they kind of hit the reset button as well, and last year, actually 2016, they passed an ordinance that kind of restricted the number of short-term rentals. So they actually, although allow it, there's a cap in terms of a maximum number of short-term rentals that they'll allow within the city. And then there's little nuances to, to their, to their, to their ordinance, where not only is it limited to 250 throughout the city, they also look at not allowing a certain number or, or a certain cap within blocks or neighborhoods, they have separation requirements, so, and then they, ultimately, they have a lottery, so, because they have had so many folks that are trying to, to do this activity. So when it comes to short-term rentals, again, owner not present, that's, you know, they have those types of restrictions. When it comes to home sharing, home sharing, they don't have a cap, as a matter of fact, they don't have any limitation on that. So that's, that's how they've, Pacific Grove has, has dealt with that issue. Anaheim was a little interesting, they, they actually, you know, got on the bandwagon in 2014 to allow it, and as we all know, that's home to Disneyland. And what happened immediately after that, there was so many short-term rentals or residential, residences that were being turned into short-term rentals, from, from what I even remember reading in newspapers and, and watching on, on, on TV is... From what I even remember reading in newspapers and watching on TV is, you had neighborhoods almost being turned to just these short-term rental locations. And you have, you know, just a huge dichotomy between those who are long-term residents, and, you know, now you have these new people coming in and having their neighborhoods really turned upside down. And so hearing that, the council decided to put an end to that. And so what they issued a moratorium and ultimately banning the activity. But what they did was acknowledging that, you know, there were investors that came in. They ended up having more of a phase-out period, an eighteen-month phase-out period, where they allowed folks to continue to operate their short-term rentals for an eighteen-month period. And in also doing that, they also allowed for an extension of that if they could prove some sort of hardship. So although there's a ban, you'll still see some short-term rentals technically out there, legal in Anaheim. But again, that's because of the phase-out. And, but ultimately, I believe by 2020, they should all be phased out in Anaheim. And then lastly, we looked at some of the cities on the hill, on Palos Verdes, and also in the South Bay, Hermosa and Redondo. They've all adopted bans. It's important to note, Hermosa, they have a ban on short-term rentals in the residential areas. Only, they allow them in the commercial, but that is only the distinction. There is, if you have a residential structure in a commercial zone, then the activity of short-term rental is okay. It's just not okay if it's in the residential. And that's really their ban, that's kind of like the asterisk on that city there. So with that, and hearing the information that we've gathered, we seek direction. We have to obviously take public input, take input and comments from the planning commission, and ultimately provide staff with some direction as to how to address short-term rentals in El Segundo.
All right, thank you very much, Eduardo. Are there any questions specifically for him before we open the public hearing?
Question for Eduardo or maybe David? If you were to search in Manhattan Beach, Hermosa, Redondo, you would get short-term rentals come up. So even though it's banned, how does that work? Are they doing it illegally?
Yeah, how is it monitored?
So, yeah, the different cities will handle it differently. Some of them are a little more proactive, especially early on. Some of the cities have utilized companies to help them identify them. But yeah, you're right, you go on any given day, and there's ways to kind of get around it. You know, they'll say, you know, Hermosa Beach adjacent or something like that, but it's technically in Hermosa. So, yeah, and a lot of it is complaint-driven, so it's usually done or addressed through code enforcement. Hermosa is a little more proactive when it comes to trying to, you know, get these things resolved. So, you know, from what I've, my discussions with their staff is, if there's a complaint and they can find some evidence, they send it directly to the city attorney. And, you know, there's no, hey, you get your first notice, second notice, they send it directly to the city attorney.
I think we talked about that a little bit the last time when this first came before planning commission, about the VRBO companies. If there is a relationship between the city and the actual company itself, so that there, if you don't, if it's a ban, that they're not allowing to post anything in your city. Is there still that alignment with the city and people like VRBO and/or?
I think if the city were to ban it expressly, we would, we could contact those vendors and let them know, this is not allowed in the city of El Segundo.
So just out of curiosity, today, when I was looking at the banned city list, I searched Santa Monica, single-family house, I mean, I found, the sites were full of them. It's like, well, you know, how does Santa Monica really enforce that ban? And, you know, we can discuss that more later, but that's just an aside.
Probably complaint-driven, like you said, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm glad Commissioner Hessler raised that, because you're right, it is complaint-driven. And one of the things that I, when speaking with their code enforcement officers over there is, you know, sometimes what they do is, is they will put their ads up, you know, at nighttime, when city staff is not present.
Wow.
And so, yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, things that they do to get around, you know, some of, you know, these bans. But, yeah, another thing, too, is, you know, what she told me is, you know, sometimes we get these complaints that, you know, it's not a, it's not a, being used as a home share, it's an actual short-term rental. You know, she said, you know, stopping short of, you know, doing like a police stakeout of the property, you know, there's really not, you know, it's really difficult to come up with that evidence to prove that in court.
One thing, one thing that cities are doing is, you know, it's one thing to advertise for use of your home, and it's another thing to prove that it's being used, an invoice or something like that, right? So in city of Hermosa Beach, in their ordinance, they specify that if you advertise for it, it's against the law. So they're actually able to go after people that way. That's something unique that I've heard city of Hermosa do.
And if someone advertises, who is breaking the law? Is it the owner or is it the company that's advertising it?
Probably the owner of the homeowner.
I don't know, that's why I asked the question.
It would probably be whoever's listed in the advertisement as the contact person. I think we'd have to have additional.
The management company or the owner, whoever would have placed the ad.
And then we'd have to have additional language if the city wanted to also make the website or the platform also responsible, we'd have to kind of build that in a little bit, you know, clearly specify that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, I think, at this time? Thank you for your patience, we'll open up for a public hearing. And if we'll ask from the audience, if, address the podium here, come up, state your name, tell us who you are, and we have a...
And Madam Vice Chair, just for members of the public, if you are going to speak, if you can just state your name, that would be helpful for the record.
Do we need address or just their name? Name and address is great, there you go.
Hi, my name's Gino Venney, I live at 1246 East Maple Avenue. I'd like to read a statement in opposition to short-term rentals. I speak on behalf of my wife, myself, and a dozen other residents in our local vicinity. We, a consensus of neighbors, would like to lodge our opposition to the proposal for amending the El Segundo municipal code, allowing short-term rentals in the residential area of El Segundo. To any owner who is not on-site and consciously exposed to the same environment the neighbors must endure from renters who solely, here solely to enjoy their time without regard to the neighborhood or the community at large. We believe this is the only factor which will effectively prevent the type of experiences we endure on a regular basis. We have had the displeasure of living next door to a home that's regularly rented out and regularly causing considerable frustration amongst all of the surrounding neighbors, who feel we have become trapped in our homes with windows closed and AC running twenty-four-seven to escape the noise and uncertainty of those living around us. It is then the next day when we must deal with the trash, the parking overload associated with this population. We become tasked with the responsibility to report bad behavior and expose to the potential retaliation from renters who might feel unfairly treated when reported, while benefactors are well out of earshot, posting rules they cannot oversee and collecting side incomes at their neighbor's expense. While it is true that it's not all short-term rentals are disrespectful, and some come to the community for peaceful respite from their day-to-day lifestyle, it is our experience that the majority come with the expectation of a resort-style escape from their homes to cut loose and let their hair down. This can encompass families with kids screaming throughout the day, hollering in the pool for hours throughout the day, teens and young adults carrying on well into the night, people jumping off roofs into the pools, all kinds of activities, drinking, trash, parking all over the place. This atmosphere is created by such a venture as one of a resort. It's unreasonable to believe that most people come out simply to relax and enjoy the community. El Segundo has only about two square miles of residential community and is under siege in an effort to increase revenues for the city and by homeowners, many not even local residents, who would turn this into a once-sleepy little burg, often referred to as Mayberry by the Sea, into a bustling hotbed of transient short-term renters with no regard for neighbors or community, exploiting the area for its reputation and community-oriented residence, personal gain. Should this change be implemented, we also believe it will further restrict and deplete the available housing for those who seek to join our community, lay down roots, and contribute to the community fabric. Finally, short-term rentals will only add one more already growing imposition on El Segundo residents, like the surrounding refinery on the south, population influx from the east-lining business community, and the most inconsiderate, second-largest airport in the country to our north, all of which bring in not only financial support, which we greatly appreciate and recognize, but also an ever-increasing amount of traffic, air, and noise pollution. Add on the western exposure, the stench from the waste from the sewage treatment plant, and the potential for a new desalination plant currently in discussion, seems little hope for keeping our quiet little community, a quiet little community. I also cannot help but wonder how many of these rentals might serve as a local staging area for those with criminal intent, basis from which to stalk, invade, and hide. We believe that it's unwise and, based on the evidence already documented and the speculation of further problems speculated, to move forward without any other than to close this issue in favor of the residents who make this community their home. That's my statement, thank you.
Thank you. Very good, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come up and?
Hey, good evening, my name's Craig Cleary, I live at 1250 East Maple Avenue. And I've lived in this community, worked in this community for over fifty-five years. And I lived on the same street for just under fifty-five years. Never really had any problems or issues with neighbors since I've lived here, until recently. The house right next door to us are now an Airbnb. And the change in quality of life over this short period of time has been unexplainable. We've experienced vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic, people coming and going all hours of the evening. I understand what the Airbnb thing's all about. I've owned property and leased, and it's revenue, and I get it. But when it comes to this, where it's not being supervised or managed, it gets out of hand and nobody knows any better other than the people that live there. I've never experienced, in living in this town, what I've experienced in the last few months. People are constantly coming and going at all different hours. I've had people in my yards late at night, looking for the party, which is next door. I've awakened the next day, there's trash in my yard. There's food bags and trash on the sidewalks, parkways, in the street. I've even heard loud, you know, conversations at night to keep me awake. I look out the window, there's people urinating in the street, Maple Avenue. I mean, it gets to the point where it's like, are you kidding me? You've got elderly people, young children living in these homes, people paying over a million dollars trying to straighten up their homes, and then you've got this element coming in that are just there for the party. They don't live here, they don't understand basically what our values are, how we live, and it's basically turned our neighborhood upside down. And so I've gone to each of the neighbors on the California side and the Maple side and have spoken to them. They're concerned, because, again, these are people coming and going on a weekly basis, just for the weekend. We've had people come in just for attending an NFL game or a concert, and they have a party afterwards. We've had people that have shown up for a pre-wedding or a post-wedding party, where it gets out of hand. And I'm not one that likes to keep calling the police and having them come out. When you do, and I kind of know how this works, as far as law enforcement goes, it's a short-term fix. It's, if it's going on, when they're there, they can shut the party down. But when you wake up the next day and you have trash in your yard, or people have been urinating in the street, it's a little late to call the police. I don't think any of us in this town want to live like that.
Mr. Cleary, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
That, the property that you're referring to, the owners aren't, it's not like home sharing?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, to explain that, the owners previously lived there. Then they took their little family and moved down the next block in a quiet little area, and they live, and then they've opened that as an Airbnb. They're never around. The first time this happened, when there was, I woke up, there was trash in my yard, plastic cups with alcohol on my wall, I said, that's enough. And I was going to go down and have a conversation with them and explain to them what's going on. They're not even home. They travel, they go sailing, they go enjoy life, live in their life, and they've turned our neighborhood upside down. Like I said, I've lived here fifty-five years, I've never really had any complaints. It's been a privilege to live in this town, and I love this town. But I can't stand what I'm seeing. And the neighbors that I've talked to on the California side and the Maple Avenue side are concerned. They're tired of it, and they don't want to see it. So, again, I've had rental properties, I understand both sides of it. But living in El Segundo, we shouldn't have to live like that. So I'm just here to share what I've experienced in just a short period of time, and I'm concerned. Because these are strangers just coming and going, we don't even know who they are. And you can't keep tabs on them, because one minute they're here and the next minute they're gone, and they leave all their trash. Has there been times where it's been a family for a week and it's been fine? Absolutely. But the most part of it, it's been, it's been a party house. It's like living next to a hotel, and what we're experiencing is it's like a fraternity or sorority house. Man, I've lived here too long, and I don't want to put up with it.
So, Mr. Cleary, first of all, that sounds terrible. I mean, it's hard not to empathize with being an El Segundo resident and imagining what that'd be like with your next door, the next-door neighbor doing that. And you know the people who own the house?
Yes.
And have you ever spoken to them?
I've tried, they're not home.
And so, so there's been no conversation?
No, and in the meantime, this is built up, to the point where I've got, unbeknownst to me, is I've had neighbors write letters to either council or to the police department saying enough's enough. I thought I was the only one that was saying, are you kidding me? But as I've talked to all the neighbors, each of the neighbors I've talked to on both sides, the California street side, the Maple Avenue side, they've had it. And they don't know what to do about it, these people are never home. They travel on business, they travel on vacation, they own another home out of state, I don't know. But this isn't El Segundo, from what I've experienced. And, again, for me to sit up here and talk to you all about this, it sounds bad. But until you actually live next to it and experience it, this is not El Segundo. I'm sorry. And again, I understand the revenue part of it, but at what expense? It's been a quality-of-life issue, and that's become a nuisance home on that block. So I just wanted to share that with you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Sanchez, 414 Virginia. You've probably heard of 416 Virginia, where we live right next door. Everything this gentleman said pertains to me, too, but in a different area. I don't know where, I know where Maple Street is, but I don't know his situation. Talking about people coming and going, probably two-to-three-day average is what these people stay at that house next door. Uber traffic is terrible. You probably get a hundred-plus in a month. That's a narrow street, just like most of them in El Segundo. Grammar-aged kids live across the street, day and night, that's happening. Couple weeks ago in Studio City, there was a house that was in the news that sounded very much like next door and probably on Maple Street. A lot of complaints for the noise and the traffic and everything, and one night gunfire sounded out. Is that going to happen here? You don't know. R1 zoning is for one-family home, right? No renting, no this, no that, granny, like this gentleman was saying. That shouldn't be allowed for R1, for sure. I don't know about other zones or whatever there might be in the city. Couple months ago, there were people arriving that were paying at the door to get in the house. So it was advertised as a party going on, you want to come to it, then you pay at the door and you go in and party. That's what happened. There are pickups, SUVs, and people going to those vehicles into the house carrying cases of beer. I mean, ten, twelve, fifteen cases of beer, ice, very little food, but they have food. Ice, very little food, but they have food. What do you expect? A party, right? And it gets noisy. We were told by the owner that, "Go ahead and call the police," because she gets to keep the, the deposit. That's an agreement they have with the renters. So, we have been reluctant to call, I know other people have called, because I don't want to give her money. It's a bad situation. Shouldn't happen in El Segundo. We've been here for forty years. Same house. Thank you.
Can I ask you a follow-up question to, similar to the Maple House? Do you know, the owners do not occupy the house?
No, they do not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Schuh. I live at, at 411 Concord Street, just behind. I'm Jeff Schuh. I live at 411 Concord Street, just behind the Virginia house that the previous gentleman had spoken about. Everything that's been said on, about Maple is, is true in our case too. This is kind of like a scab that we have to scratch and open up, it seems like, because we come to the city council and now planning. This is not a new issue. It may be new to you, but to us, it's not, as we've gone to ESPD and council. I'd like to say hooray for Hermosa Beach, I think they've got it right. There's, there's a couple of things. First of all, the noise complaint, as you've heard. It's pretty much every weekend, if you were to go on Airbnb and you look at, at 416 Virginia, I mean, 420, what's it, 416 Virginia, you'll see it's booked every weekend. So for us, it's, it's constant noise every weekend. Now, it's fine for a lot of the people, because, really, if you, if you go on two houses on either side and across the street, in our case, at the back, because they're on a hill and we're down, so the, the voices carry, and it's like, like they're partying in our kitchen. But you take it around, there's a twelve homes that are just really seriously impacted, but other, you get past the two houses in either direction, and they don't even, they're not even aware of it. So I guess you could take the position that, well, heck, for every one of these party houses, only, only twelve residences are affected, so no big deal. But we are affected, we're, we're really affected. The other points that, that were brought up are R1 zoning. I live next to a hotel now. I didn't buy next to a hotel, but I sure live next to one now, one that's fully occupied every weekend. I'm sure that if I had to sell my house, my property value would be down somewhat, because I'd have to disclose, hey, it's pretty good Monday through Thursday, but Friday, you better put your ear, earplugs in, especially if you have kids. The other thing that was brought up, which is, which is serious concern to me, is, is the, the safety issue. We don't know, every, every weekend, there's new people there, every weekend. My neighbor, Gary Schmunk, who lives right next door, who's directly behind, we're encouraged to take pictures. He went out one evening to take pictures of them jumping off the roof into the pool, and he was threatened. Well, his, his, his question to the, to the police was, "Well, how do I protect myself for that? You want me to take pictures, but I, I'm getting threatened if I do that." So that's the other thing. And, but, the other thing that brought up is, is what happened in Anaheim. Investors are coming in, investors are coming in and, and buying houses and turning them into, into party houses where the income is even greater. If you allow short-term rentals like this, so there's multiple houses like on Virginia and Maple, if you allow that to spread throughout El Segundo, you've changed the very soul of this city. I've lived here over twenty years, I've raised my children here, it's a darn-good place, and, and now, and it has been a great place in the past, but if you change the whole of the city, it, the soul of the city, it no longer will become a city to raise children, and it'll be a city of, oh, let's, let's go to El Segundo and party on Friday and leave our, our beer bottles and beer cans, and go back to our house on Sunday night and leave it behind. I don't want to live in a party city, I like the city I live in. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Mary Sanchez, I live right next door, 414 Virginia. I just wanted to say, this place, it's not like they're bringing in just a family to stay for the weekend or the week. She has stuffed thirty-one beds into this house. You could bring an army in there, and they do, they've had buses stop, and they let all the people out. And it's like, their back deck and their jacuzzi come right off onto our, our back porch. We can't even sit on the back porch, because it's, it's noise, and it's like, they are, they're jumping off the roof into the pool, somebody's going to kill themselves, because that pool has rock all the way around it. And it's just, and there's some lady living in the garage. Some lady living in the, and she has her living in the garage who saws day and night. That can't be legal either, because, I don't know. Anyway, I just wanted to say, it, it's a nightmare. I didn't know that you had that at Maple too, but I, I, you know, sympathize with you. It's horrible. It is, and we've lived here for forty years, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else?
My name's Kathy Wishard, and I live at 427 Concord. I'll expound on the lady in the garage. Supposedly, she's an artist, and so she saws and sands and uses power tools twenty-three out of twenty-four hours. She's up late at night, every night. She's living in the garage, it looks like, I don't, I can't even say what it, it looks like, but there's junk all over the alley, furniture, garbage. She parks a car there, there's been three different cars, none of them have had license plates. The police have come and ticketed her for blocking the alley, so she'll move the car, and as soon as they leave, she'll move it right back. She moved it from one end of the alley to the other, put cones around it, they came right back and ticketed her again. She doesn't, she doesn't care what anyone says to her, she has no regard for authority. The trash truck sat right behind her truck and just laid on the horn for like twenty minutes. One of the neighbors came out, said, "What's going on?" The trash truck guy said, "I can see a hand in there, I don't want to knock, you do it." And she said, "Well, I'm not doing it, I'll call the police." So the police came, the fire department came, turns out, she's sleeping in the truck with earphones on. I don't know about you, but if there was a huge trash truck right on my bumper, I'd be, you know, you'd be vibrating, you'd know something was there, even if you couldn't hear it. She's just obstinate, and she just does what she wants to do, and doesn't care what anybody says. So calling the police or asking her to do things, the other thing is, when the police go there, she won't let them in to the garage. I didn't know you could refuse to let the police into your property.
She doesn't sound like she's a short-term rental person.
She's, she, no, she's permanent in the garage.
She's, okay, all right, that's probably a very different issue.
Before, well, it's the same property. And, the thing is, is if you allow short-term rentals in the city, then you're going to have landlords like this woman who's renting out her house, because...
Is she the landlord?
No, the, the woman who owns the house rents the house.
To this person?
To these thirty-six people.
Okay.
There, it's a thirty-six-bed rental. And then, in the garage, you have this woman, and it's a two-part garage, in the other half is a motorcycle repair business. So we have motorcycles being, you know, tested after they're repaired at all hours, also. So, before that, it was a car repair guy who did Bondo-ing, and, so he was sanding and the stuff was flying all over. This woman dumps paint into the water meter, she has dumped urine and feces in other people's backyards.
Yes, well, it does not make for good neighbors, there's no question about it.
No, but the point is, if you approve short-term rentals, every single one, every single house in El Segundo has the potential to become a party house like this. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lorna Ennis. I live at 514 East Maple. I've lived there for fifty-four years, lived in El Segundo since nineteen fifty-one. The house across the street from me is a rental, and he runs an Airbnb from there. We have contacted the people that own the house, and they couldn't care less as long as they get their rent money each month. And I can assure you, everything these people have said is true. And if you had an Airbnb in your neighborhood, you would definitely be against this short-term rental.
And, I'm sorry...
I, I agree, El Segundo's a wonderful place, I wouldn't have spent most of my life here, but things are changing, and I would hate to see us, you know, turn into this place where we have all these Airbnbs.
Ms. Ennis, I think there's a question...
Yeah, Ms. Ennis, is, is the Maple House the same one that Mr. Cleary described? Different?
No, I live in the 500 block, they're way down the street.
Thank you for clarifying, okay.
Somebody else is... Come on, there you go.
So, I'm Mary Avani, you know, it's my husband. I live at 1246 East Maple. The house that we're talking about is actually 771 California. So, we're, Craig and we live next door to each other on Maple, and they are right behind us. The Airbnb is right behind us, and we are also set a little lower than them, so we get to see them, you know, dive from the block wall, the six-foot block wall into the pool and hear that, on a routine basis. And I have, we have two seventy-pound dogs that come Friday afternoon, when they hear, they won't even go out to the backyard to do their business, we got to walk them, because they're terrified. As, as my husband said, we close windows, put the air conditioning on, but we can still hear them, two, three in the morning. Occasionally, I've opened up a bedroom, you know, back window and screamed out at them, they can't even hear me. So, but it is, we've been here over twenty years, and we invest, we invested into this community for that length of time. We invested in our home. We didn't want to move next door to a hotel. I can check the Airbnb and see how often it's going to be rented, and there's nothing we can do about it. Friday afternoon comes along, and it's like, okay, how ugly is it going to be this weekend? I don't want to live that way here. And I don't think any one of you people on the commission, I don't think any people on the council or the mayor would want to live that way either. Or would want people in this town to feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Good evening, thank you for taking my statement. My name is Veronica Bryce, I'm at 419 Virginia, and I didn't realize there was more than one house we're talking about. So the one, the house that I'm talking about is 416, so I live directly across from it. And I've had my share of run-ins with them, my other neighbors who live right next door to, to them, they experience it far more, because they're right next door, but if I can hear it across the street, it's pretty loud. And the other thing too, it's, for me, it's mostly a safety issue, because I've had two instances where they've come to my house and walked onto my property, thinking it was the house. One of it being some guy, some college kid had just gotten off a plane and walked down my driveway and into my backyard at one o'clock in the morning and was knocking to get the key for our upstairs office, that's above our garage, thinking that that was the property. Another one was, a group of girls had pulled into the driveway and started to unload and asked for a key. I mean, same thing, it was just like eleven o'clock at night, and there's this vibe now, and I've been at our property since December of 'oh-three, and it's changed, because every weekend, I mean, maybe some of the winter, during the winter months, it may not happen as often, but now that it's during the summer months and into the fall, every weekend ends up being a different deal, and you don't know how it's going to work out. I've had some instances where my park, uh, my driveway's been blocked, because some teams have showed up. They're unloading, and, and they use my driveway as a means of dropping people off and, and unloading. And, and other times, there are group, there are adult groups that come in, and they're just really obnoxious, and they're out front, either hurling obscenities. My neighbor, right next to me, had said that she was out with her two sons, and some of these guys had pulled up in an Uber and intoxicated, and they were urinating out in the front yard, in front of her two six-year-old boys. So, it's hit or miss, and it just doesn't feel like this is a neighborhood anymore. And if that is the case, where every weekend ends up being a different group, it's like, what are you, what are you looking to expect? You know, and, and on my side of the street, we have four families that have younger kids, ranging from four to mine is thirteen, and with that kind of activity going on, it doesn't feel like a neighborhood anymore. So, my concern is that, as well as safety, and overall, it's, you could feel the change, and it doesn't feel like it's a good one. So I thank you for taking my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Coulter at 522 Richmond Street, and I'll keep mine short, because I did submit a letter and some photos and videos. We have a busy block, we know our neighbors, this one next door, which Carol, you, you know, she's one of my neighbors, I see her every morning coming back from her walk. I'll point out, because we're the only ones speaking on Richmond, we have two, one being a back unit, the motor guy is in the front unit, sleeps two, it literally is just a little crash path. Never been a problem. You might see an Uber pull up, drop them off. The one right next door to me is, I get the brunt of it, so I know I'm probably the one complaining the most about it, but completely uncomfortable. I don't know any of these people that come in every couple days. We've had sports teams, we've had graduation parties, we have catering trucks, we have margarita machines, we have music. The family may come to stay there, which sleeps six, but their entire family comes for whatever family event they're doing that day. I think we had two graduation parties, we've had bridal showers, we had a company event the other day with thirty people, that I eventually reached out to the management company three times, over six hours, nothing. So I finally said, "Never mind, I'll just go ahead and call the owner." Then she gets the call, and as I'm texting her, she said, "Oh, they just called me," and I said, "Oh, because I told them, I'm going to be calling you." And she's like, "Well..." She goes on and left it as, accepted as a neighborhood given. And I went, "Okay, thank you." As the people next door shushed me, because they were videotaping their event, when I walked out to get my mail. So I just went, "Okay, I'm done, I will not deal with the owner anymore, who's in Seattle, it's three kids that have now taken over the property after the mom passed. Management company doesn't do anything, I don't want to call the police, this is not their first priority, it's the owners." But now I'm just hoping that something will be passed, and the city of LA did pass that it should be owner-occupied and a certain amount of days, so I'm kind of hoping that at, at least if we can follow suit. You know, something has to give, because the owner doesn't do anything, the management company doesn't do anything, and it, it's, it's excessive. If you live next to it, you'll definitely know. I mean, the videos and the things, I mean, it may seem silly, and some of it's during the daytime that I just go, "Okay, it's during the day, after ten, then I'll, I'll call," but it's been all day long. Or the amount of, you know, pot that fills up my house, that I have to shut all the windows, or my kids wake up, because it starts at nine in the morning. They sit out there, they're on vacation, all day long. So, we do have two, I just want to express, I know there's a party house, we have a simple home, and then we have an owner-occupied, so you got to see kind of, there's a bunch of different levels, but still, I think owner-occupied is key, is definitely key to these rentals. So, that's it. That's my little piece on Richmond Street, the only one that hasn't been hit on.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Gary Schmunk, I live at 415 Concord Street, we're directly behind the infamous 416 Virginia Street that I'm sure everybody's heard it a lot about. I'm sorry that there's others suffering from the same thing we are. Um, I'm sorry that there's others suffering from the same thing we are. Um, one of my biggest concerns that happened when I was at a city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I decided to speak, even though it was not about short-term rental, to do a little reminder to the city council that it was an ongoing problem, is that- that's where I ran into Gino, who popped up after me at the golf course city council meeting and said, I have the same problem Gary does. So, my bigger concern is that there's more of a widespread problem than we even know about because nobody's reporting it to the police. They're just keeping it amongst the close-by neighbors. And I think potentially, it's a bigger problem than we even know about. And I think before anything's passed, we need to do some kind of serious surveying to find out how many problematic ones there really are. I just have to tell you, my first email to Sam Lee was April two thousand sixteen. We still suffer today from that property. Now, with something that grew into a problem in the garage. Okay? So, now, we have an illegal rental, an illegal business making noise all day out of the garage. Now, possibly, we're gonna pass some kind of regulation here, I'm assuming, which I'm hoping you don't because I'm completely opposed to short-term rental or home sharing. I just think- I'm a believer like Brenda. If you don't have a strict black line, that people are gonna creep over into the gray area every single time, and you're gonna have problems. And I, from my standpoint, I'm exhausted. I have PTSD from this. I don't know on any- what night I'm gonna get woken up at night. Two nights ago, I kept thinking, I'm hearing noise while I'm sleeping. I'm hearing some noise. I wake up out of a sound sleep through almost closed windows in our bedroom. I go out to the kitchen. I step out the outside door. And yes, of course, it's the four-sixteen Virginia. People in the jacuzzi, partying away, talking in very loud voices and shouting and laughing and having a party 'cause they don't care. This isn't their neighborhood. Okay? And this, I am fully and completely exhausted. I don't know what else to tell you about this situation. And I don't think- I'm not just here to talk about mine. I think there's a bigger problem we don't even know about. And I just think, I don't even see how we're gonna possibly regulate this other than to say absolutely no. And here's a five-thousand-dollar fine if you get caught. And by the way, good point for the Hermosa Beach City with the situation on advertising. I think the website company that posted it and the person that posted the illegal advertisement should both have to pay a fine. That would really cut back. In doing a little research for this meeting, I was looking at what cities abandoned and which ones haven't. And in looking for Redondo Beach, who's banned it, I found- at first, I hit all the advertisements for short-term rentals in Redondo Beach. So, it's still going on. So, unless there's a severe penalty for doing it, nobody's gonna stop. And, um, the fact that there are regulations in this town, and I'm gonna take an example, is I don't believe we have the capability to regulate it. I have somebody living in a garage, operating a business out of a garage, making noise all hours of the night, and yet, we haven't shut that down in six months. So, how in the world are we gonna regulate short-term rental or home sharing? I don't see how we could possibly do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mona Eisman, four-fifteen Concord. That was my husband. Okay? I'm the researcher and the business person. So, everything they said, I agree with. But I want to bring some new information. Okay? First of all, I want you to read, in a review of four-six- of four-sixteen was what happens in El Segundo stays in El Segundo. So, I just want you to know that what is going on is public, viewable, and enforceable if cities choose to do that. I'm just- it's not hidden. It's public. These companies are operating in public. CNBC did a- did a wonderful review article of how cities all across the country are battling illegal short-term rentals. And I just want to give you a few highlights. And anything I cite, I can certainly provide to the council and the staff. Um, complaints about quality of life- local laws may vary, but complaints about quality of life issues caused by illegal short-term rentals are similar. Dozens of interviews, city officials and residents across our country, um, have complained about the home-sharing industry. Okay? So, we're not unique. It's happening in every city across America. Question was asked about Airbnb VRBO. They have no liability in this chain. It is the host and the guest. Okay? The host is the property owner. And without significant fines, as some cities are doing upwards of five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand-dollar fines, the financial reward to this business is so great that they are willing to be fined by cities. The guests, they're on vacation. They've given up a security deposit. So, they have no ownership and no responsibility. So, that now leaves the neighborhood working with their city, as you know, we've tried to do. We've all gotten to know you better than we ever thought we would to know who's working in our planning departments in our city council. Okay? But the only people to help the neighborhoods now are the cities. And now, you can say, what are the cities doing? Well, some, as you saw, are completely banning it. Some are trying to regulate it. And I'm gonna give you some examples of what some regulation in other cities is happening. And again, it's researched. I can provide you the information. First of all, home sharing. People are buying investment property and hiring ghost hosts. Okay? That's what they're called. Ghost hosts. So, it's advertised by someone who quote-unquote supposedly lives there, but they don't. It's a ghost. And they're not- they're never at that property. So, if we're going to do home sharing, which I hope we do not, again, I'm supportive of the Hermosa Beach. Clear ban. One clear standard, easier to enforce. We must be able to enforce ghost hosts. Meaning, the person must truly be living there. Again, present. The other- the other thing is, if a complaint occurs, is the owner reachable or available within a very short period of time to remedy the situation? We had a terrible July fourth week. I hope you had fun. We didn't. We had a party. We were being threatened all week by the people there. The police told us we could not get those people evicted. Not in our power to stop a situation. So, some communities are looking at, the owner must be present. They must be willing to evict. Quick out. Now, if you run a Bernie gone- a Bernie's Gone Wild party hotel, anyone, spring break, whatever. Right. Pardon me. Um, uh, if you're making noise on the second or third time, the manager of the hotel just says, you're out of here. You're gone. We do not, in home sharing, have that, I'm told, legal ability to do that. We must have that legal ability to do that. So, we can't live with- it can't be six months later, three months later. Those people are gone. You're going to have our people issue them citations and chase them all around the country as they go back to their normal lives. So, in that case, that's- so, when you say home sharing, be very careful that they truly are home sharing. They must be present. And cities who are allowing that are around the country are regulating that. Now, limit check-in times. Many cities around the world are limiting check-in times for- to stop what happened at Veronica's house and lots of people's houses. You shouldn't have people checking, coming and going twenty-four hours a day. And there are cities that are giving very limited times, not after eight o'clock at night, certain times. And someone must be present. No lock boxes, which this house has a lock box. So, you can't come and go at different times. Um, hold on. I have more here. Um, Airbnb is legally resisting providing, as VRBO, as any names and information. Does El Segundo want to join the likes of New York City, Miami Beach, very large cities, and take Airbnb to court? So, we better be prepared if we're asking something of any of these companies. They have probably more attorneys than they have marketing officers. So, we must be prepared unless we're going to do something very black and white. But there, che- large cities are taking them to court. And by the way, cities are winning, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. But Airbnb does not have a good record of complying with local laws. They are- they will help you collect taxes, but they will not help you shut down properties. That is the experience of cities across. They will not share information with you. And that has been, um, the experience of cities. There is a huge, um, study out of McGill University on this, that it is not just bad for the community from the standpoint of- of the noise, but that it is not good for property values. It is not good for rental. And it's not good for having, um, having housing be made available. Um, to answer a couple of your questions, who's liable? That has to be very clear. The owner is the property owner, is the one liable. But what- how do we make the guest have some pain for what they do when they visit our town? So far, we've not figured that out. Okay? And today, the owner, every time we call the police, makes more money. You heard that. It's a great deal for her. Wow. Okay? Um, so, and then, again, I could go on and on. I've got lots of studies on different, um, on what other cities are doing. But in general, the trend is to shut down, more aggressively regulate short-term rental. It is not good for the neighborhoods. It's also not good for building housing, building a community. We don't have a large residential area. Do we want more children in our schools, or do we want parties? Another review just said, great party house, close to liquor stores. I loved that one. Okay? Great party house. Oh, the neighbors are gonna complain about you. We're a joke to the people who come here. What's going on in our- is a joke to the people who are renting. And the property owners are- are- the property owners are the ones benefiting. The people who are renting, if someone wants to throw a party, we have lots of hotels. If someone wants to throw a professional business thing and videotape it, I bet we could give them a list of wonderful hotels that could really provide them excellent service that's not in our R-one neighborhood. But I want to be very clear to you, to this council, to this planning commission in this city. We are not alone. We should not be naive that people who do this in El Segundo are gonna be more well-behaved than they are somewhere else. And we should be prepared to be part of something, to either take a very strong stand like Hermosa Beach does, or to be commit- prepared to put the resources to manage this. And to date, we have not seen that. We have not seen fast action. And the fines have to be gigantic, painful enough to not allow it. And if Manhattan Beach has banned it, if Hermosa Beach has banned it, if Redondo Beach has banned it, I can assure you, it puts the demand, supply and demand economics, the- it makes, if we allow any of this, El Segundo, we will have more of them. And to my husband's point, we now have houses. We have four houses we know of today that are problems. We thought we were the only ones. We have four. How many more do we have? Four houses. How many- it's gonna- it's on Richmond, it's on Virginia, it's on Maple. How many more streets? Do we want the- do we want every couple of streets to have one? We could- so, everyone can live through this on a regular basis? I don't think so. So, again, and then I have to end with something because I must- I think it has to be said. Um, many of these Airbnb houses around the country and close to us in Los Angeles have experienced parties that resulted in shootings. There have been more than a dozen. That was only in my first Google search, and I'm still going. I can list the cities for you. The houses I was shocked to find, they're having a party, and they're charging at the front. You don't know who's walking in. But I will- can list the cities for you where these Airbnb, VRBO, short-term houses publicly advertise parties have result in shootings. People have been wounded and killed. We are afraid. This is not- we are afraid. We are afraid to complain to them because we're being threatened. This is not a little disruption, as we were told by a police officer. A minor disruption. It is not. We need what is going on to be taken seriously and to be seen as a safety issue for every single person in this community. And again, if anyone would like copies of the studies, the articles, and all the research of what is going on around this country and around the world, Airbnb's business model is falling apart. They're looking at building hotels because so many cities are banning them. Home sharing because it is being corrupted by people who are ghost hosting. It- everyone thought that's a nice solution in the middle. Isn't that a good way to accommodate people? But no. And if you- the statistics, most of air- the business here is done by a small minority of people looking to do this purely for profit, not to just get a little extra income in their house. And I know that there are a few properties here and there renting a room, not bothering. But we need very black and white legislation that can be enforced because whatever leeway we give someone, they will take. If we give an inch, they will take a million miles. And it will not stop. And I hope it- we're not here one day because we have a police report of people shot and killed in our town because it was at a short-term rental, like other cities are seeing. And I'm sorry to end on that. But- but maybe the- maybe the planning commission and our city was not aware of the violence level happening at short-term rental parties around the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. Um, I've had a lot of people say, well, if you have that much noise next door, why don't you call the police? That's not my job. My job is not to police that house, not to police those people who are here on vacation. That's not my job. I have enough trouble sitting on the back porch and having them glare at me because somebody else called the police on them. And they just assume it was us 'cause we're next door. You know, or with Gary going out and, hey, that's okay if you call them. I- I just- it's not- it's not our job. I've had them come, and they bring wine. They'll bring a bottle of wine over when they first get there. Kind of like, well, in case we're too loud tonight, take your wine back. But, yeah, it's not our job to have to call the police.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to? Uh-huh?
Connie Thrasher, five-twelve Richmond. I'm only gonna add a couple of things, I promise. So, a couple of things to recognize. I do think there are the different property types that we have to really address. I'm specifically talking about a non-owner-occupied. They're not in the vicinity. They have no idea. I tried to talk to them. She- she doesn't live near one, so she has no idea. They're trying to find some solutions, but the solution is that they have no oversight. And to the point that was just made, we don't want to be the police. We don't want to call. But I think to also recognize, there are more than four properties in the town. It's just that most of us haven't said a lot because you don't know who to go to. And when we have called in to- you- non-emergency to the police And when we have called in to, you, non-emergency to the police, because some of these aren't, you know, that big of an issue that you feel like you should pull resources who could be working on things that are much more important than this, and then to find out, not even reports are being done. So, there's a hit and miss on the information that you're getting, hit and miss on the reports that are in. So, I think we need to look a little bit broader as to what's going on. This particular property is rented all the time, and it's like two days, two to three days, and then a cleaning crew comes, more people move in. There are some good renters that come in. A lot of times, they are individuals who are, you know, Casey sent video, I mean, if you could see some of the stuff, I mean, it's just, you know, guys that are looking to go somewhere because they're on parole and they don't want to get caught. I mean, we have had some really interesting things that they'll just say to us, but they're on vacation. We're not on vacation. So, I think you need to look at how often it's happened. It's not just on the weekends. And I know Carol, you live on the same street, but, you know, we're next door to it. So, we get more of the noise, we get more of the, you know, visibility to it, work-from-home situations, so we see a little bit more. If we were out all day long, we wouldn't even see, you know, thirty people stroll up the street and go into the house. And we're a half a block from Richmond Street School. And the stuff that has occurred out in the property with kids getting out of school, it's like, gosh, somebody, you know, we need to do some controls around it. So, it's just looking at it from a non-owner occupied, no visibility, no oversight of it, not as much reporting done because it either doesn't get, doesn't get logged, or you just figure you're not going to report it. So, I think doing a survey is great, but I just don't know how much information you're going to get if you don't get out deeper. I do know of six other people in town that are not these homes that have them living next door to them. Most of them are impacted on the weekends. We went online and looked, and when you're looking at where these things, these properties are posted, this particular property, I counted twelve different rental sites that, because what they have done now is if you register with a particular rental site, like a management company, they can post on various. So, it may not just be on VRBO or HomeAway. I found them actually on international sites in other languages that, so, so they've got some kind of a network through the internet where they can just do this. And that's why this property is occupied so often. Sometimes, again, it's, you know, families, sometimes it's, we just had an event there the other day, as Casey had said, that was a company event, you know, and there, and it was all day long. And, you know, that really, when you look from a revenue standpoint, you know, we're not taxing them, you know, they're not getting taxed for doing this. They're, everything is collected for the homeowner, so they're, you know, they're profiting. This property is probably bringing them in close to twenty thousand a month. So, that's a lot of money. And if there are any issues that occur, such as having to have the police come out for it, they're not paying any additional cost to the city for use of our services. So, I think, I, I just think there has to be something from a financial standpoint, oversight standpoint, and then really trying to do some kind of regulations that can be monitored, you know, and not suck up our city resources on doing something that really, if the owner was there, they'd be taking care of it. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Dwayne Kelly. Live at 834 Hillcrest Street, and I have been dealing with this since 2016. In 2016, we had one party house on Virginia that everybody complained about. Now, it looks like we have three or four party houses in El Segundo, and I have to sympathize with all of them. I've been an Airbnb host for four years. I take in roughly a hundred dollars a day if I rent it every day of the month, so I'm not making twenty thousand dollars a month. We've never had a complaint, we've never had a problem, and I don't think we should be passing laws that are going to put everything together. Last year, the city council came up with some very good recommendations of controlling the party house, but it appears they wanted to control the party house and everything else. I think maybe it's time that the city council addressed just the party houses. If you just address the party houses, that will eliminate the majority of the complaints. We have over three hundred Airbnbs in El Segundo. We have three or four complaints.
Can you, Mr. Kelly, give us an example of your model of Airbnb and how your model works for you?
First of all, we do not allow party houses. They, there's a place right in Airbnb that says, "If you want to be, if this is a party house..."
You, you home share, in other words. You don't rent your house out, you're always there.
Well, and sometimes we are. Sometimes we're even on vacation.
Okay.
And we rent it out while we're on vacation.
Okay.
But we've never had a problem. Our neighbors are quite aware of where we are, when we are, and we, we do a lot of validation. With Airbnb, when someone comes and says they'd like to rent it, there's a review that is written for every state that they go to. If they do not have a review, we require a lot more information. We want to know who's going to be here, you know, and what type of people they are. We had a lady yesterday basically say, "My son and his, his buddy want to rent your home." And we say, "No, we don't rent to neighbors. We rent to the person that is going to make the reservation. We want to see them because, you know, if their son comes, we have no idea what they're going to do." So, we're very restrictive on who we rent to. But I'd like to see the city just address the one thing is the party house. And that, because it appears that the whole Airbnb rental is too big to handle. So, I would like to see them change because I have a lot of empathy for all of these people that are fighting these problems because we've had the same problem. We have an Airbnb, and our neighbors have parties. So, that causes us a problem, but that's the way life is.
And, Mr. Kelly, you do this vetting yourself.
Pardon me?
You do the vetting of the applicants yourself. You don't have a management company that does that for you?
We do everything ourselves. It's not that hard. I mean, someone says, "Hey, I want to rent your house," and we look at it and say, "What are your reviews?" And we look at their reviews, and like I say, if they don't have a review, then my wife gets on, asks them lots of questions, and then we make an evaluation. And then some, we turn them down sometimes because they don't meet our requirement.
When you say reviews, what do you mean? Where, where would you get these reviews?
Every person, every time you log on to Airbnb and you request a room from someplace, you get the room, the host is required to evaluate them, and they are requested to evaluate the host. So, you read what the, all of the other hosts have said about the people.
And in your home, do you rent out your entire home, or do you have a few rooms or a suite or something? What do, what do you physically rent out?
We rent out basically half of our home. We're, we're generally there. Sometimes we have rent out the entire house, but we very seldom do that. But we've never had a problem of any kind.
Thank you.
But I would like to see the city council just take on that one small task. I think that would eliminate a lot of problems that we're hearing.
Thank you.
My name is Leila Shu. I live on 411 Concord Street, right behind the party house, 416 Virginia. I appreciate you being a good host, and I feel very sorry for all the other people who are suffering like we are. My husband talked earlier. I sent, I think fifty-five pictures and videos to the city lawyer. I sent them to you, but you never got them, so, Mr. Lee. Oh, okay. So, I just look at the date, July eleventh, nine, uh, 2015 are the first pictures. And we are discussing here how the city is controlling or trying to control and take care of things. Nothing has happened. We have had several businesses trying to basically poison us there with, there's a car shop, there is a sanding and painting cars in my fucking backyard. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. I'm, I'm, I have PTSD like Gary has. I am up to here. I have had people living in there from different parts of country in the garage fixing motorcycles, putting their feces in my trash cans. And I just got that gift three times. Two times, somebody dumped feces and urine in my backyard because I am not nice anymore. I call the police every time. I will call them ten times a day if I have to. Please, people, don't think that you don't, you can't call the police. You need to call the police because nobody's taking care of us anymore. I was in Europe over two months. I felt so damn nice. I came home and it was gone in a week. And I was like, nothing happened when I was gone. I was hoping this, this house behind us was quiet, there was no business, no sawing, four o'clock in the morning, no trash everywhere. You never know, we can't even fix our backyard fence because we are afraid to do it. My husband has had discussions with security companies. We are putting like two, two, two thousand five hundred, thirty thousand dollars security system. This is El Segundo, we used to have doors open. City is not helping us. You are not protecting us as citizens of El Segundo anymore. You haven't done it. It's all talk. It's all, oh, we had a 2016, we did this and this and this. What did you do? Nothing. Our life is getting worse and worse and worse. It's affecting my, my relation to my husband because I get so pissed off. I've said, "I have to go and stay in a hotel. I can't stay in my house." This woman who lives in this garage says, "Don't, don't you guys have double windows in this town so we won't hear the noise?" I, I said, "Yes, I have very fancy ones." I will not close my windows so you can make noise and have here, your business here. I'm done. I don't, I move out. I don't know what I'm going to do. But this thing is ruining our life here, and I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, just for the, just for the benefit, if everyone can just direct their comments to the commission, it would help just because, that they're the ones that have to make the decision, not staff.
Um, that's fine. Mona Eiseman, 415 Concord. The gentleman, we've heard from him before, and I'm sure he's a responsible host. I've done the research, the, that is not the norm sadly in this business model, okay? The investors who, who rent these, who use this business model of short-term rental, and yes, there are more than a dozen, and then once you put it on, then it get, it gets pushed out to international sites. So, now, you can just be on a few sites, and suddenly you're advertised around the world, isn't that fabulous? But if you read what's happening around the country in towns from our size to larger in all sizes, that the majority of hosts are not responsible, it is for pure financial gain, the guests come as vacation with no, a large, many, 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 too many guests come without any sense. They, they, they do things in, on vacation they would never do at home. Okay? I don't know if any of us can put in our own head, sometimes we did something on vacation we wouldn't do at home, we didn't want our neighbors to see, okay? That this business model, this home sharing, is attacking communities, and yes, there are good hosts. But I must reiterate that unless this city, larger cities are challenged, that's why they're shutting it down because enforcement of a gray area. Is it home sharing? Is the host home? Is this city prepared to do that? That is the question. We have not seen, even with party ordinance, it, cities move very slowly to take care of problem issues, okay? And I believe there are many in this town. And again, I urge them to have very black and white. Just say no, make it very clear because otherwise, the bad actors and hosts which appear, according to the studies and reports, to the majority of the people reaping the financial benefits of this, um, are going to be even more in our city than they currently are. And yes, there are some responsible ho, home share, I get that. But to be honest, you, I hope that the planning commission and the city council is going to work for the best of the, the quality of life in this community and not the financial benefit of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, before we close public hearing, wish to address? All right, we'll close public hearing, and the rest of the comments will come from the dais here. Interesting discussions, and appreciate everybody's turnout and comments. I, I first am, I remark on Eduardo's presentation how the cities that you've, that have allowed short-term rentals are now sort of backtracking and trying to rein it in a little bit because it does seem to be a rampant issue. There's no question about it.
And the flip side, there are cities that have outright banned it who are also now reconsidering it. I, I just want to clarify that point. I'm not saying one or the other.
Yeah.
So, I, I have a big question. This party house ordinance that just passed, can you tell us about that? Can you tell us what it means, what it does, how it's, how it's enforced?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. Uh, yeah, the council adopted a, it's actually allowed and unruly gatherings, the nickname is party house ordinance, back in June. And the idea is that if there is anything that constitutes a loud and unruly gathering, if the police department gets a phone call, the police can issue a citation if they, if they feel like the disturbance meets the standards outlined in the ordinance. The citation would be issued to the, the people at the house. And then it, there's a fine structure that was adopted by the city council. I think it starts at twenty-five hundred dollars per violation. So, we've, we've, we've implemented the ordinance, staff is on board with the ordinance, and if the police get a phone call, they know that the ordinance is on the books and they can enforce it. So, I would encourage people to call the police if they think that there's a loud and unruly gathering going on in their neighborhood because the police can enforce this new law. The council was responsive to the community's concerns. And there's, I'm sorry.
Good question.
It's a, the, the citation started twenty-five hundred, it goes up to five thousand for the second violation, and then seventy-five hundred for third violation, and they're on out for that, for that calendar, or for the twelve-month period. Yes.
Anybody's used it?
Yes.
Well, we would have to reopen a public hearing. So, right now, this is going to be...
There are citations on that door at 416.
I understand, and if we get a chance to reopen, then you can make that comment. So, please hold that thought.
And the citation goes to the owner, their fine, not the...
Anyone, anyone who's responsible for, but it would be the property owner who posted at the property. The reality is, is that the city can issue citations. That doesn't necessarily always mean that people are going to change their behavior right away, right? So, the, the city, we've issued notices of violation to the Virginia property. We've, there's an open code enforcement case. Our office is well aware of all the things that are going on. Many of the public speakers have dialogued directly with our office. We're working on it as we speak, and we're aware of the issue. It takes a lot of resources, and we have a certain level of evidence that we have, a burden of evidence that we have to establish in order to file a court action, a legal action. So, it takes, it takes some time, it takes some resources, but we're, but we're on it.
Is there anything in that ordinance that would say after a certain number of citations, you are prohibited from renting to anyone?
No, but the ordinance makes clear that the citation itself is not the city's only remedy. So, the city could always, there's public nuisance rules, there's criminal actions, there's a variety of different actions the city can take. The citation is just one means, but there's nothing that would necessarily allow the city to shut it down just because, you know, maybe, you know, one citation has been issued. We'd have to, we'd have to go to court to do that.
Interesting. I don't know, I know you've used short-term rentals. I've never, ever, I, I would go to a hotel. It's not that that's a bad thing because you've expressed at the last commission, your experience has always often been a good one, never, never had a bad one. I, I tend to not necessarily be in favor of short-term rentals for a community like ours. I, I'm more inclined to explore the option of home sharing. It seemed, but I, I'm not really sure if somebody, like, have you home shared?
I have not.
Okay.
No.
It's not as, it's not as appealing to me as a, you know, if you're traveling and then you're going to go someplace, and then there's people that actually own the home that actually live there. Not that it would be different if it were an ADU or a separate, you know, bungalow in the back.
Right.
But the idea that you're going to just kind of go and rent a room and it just...
And I think also maybe to the point that somebody made earlier, it becomes hard to validate that somebody is actually living there and sharing a room versus renting their entire house.
Right. Sam, do you know anything more about the Hermosa ordinance?
I, I do not.
Okay.
I don't know the details, but...
So, they have banned home rentals, short-term home rentals completely?
They've, they've banned short-term rentals in most of their city. There are some areas in the city where there are some non-conforming residential areas, I believe in their, in their commercial areas now. They do allow short-term rentals in those small portion of their city.
And do you know what, what happens to a violator?
That's, I, I don't know that part.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I did hear that, um, they're, they are happy with, um, um, recognizing that just advertising, um, a short-term rental is a tool for them. That they don't have to go to the next step of proving that somebody actually rented it out was, has been helpful for them.
So they're suing, the ordinance affects the rental company?
That's the part, I don't know the details of exactly who they go after, but, um, yeah.
Okay. Do you know anything more about that, David?
Yeah, I actually pulled up an article while we were, um, listening to the public comment. And, um, from what I can tell, it looks like the city has issued some citations to the actual property owners. Um, it looks like, um, there's been some complications. Um, sometimes the owners, you know, claim that they didn't get the citations. Um, and then it looks like the courts have actually, um, it looks like sometimes the courts have actually dismissed the, the charges that the city was bringing. So again, I, I just wanna emphasize, um, it's not as easy as it might, it might seem to sometimes criminally or civilly prosecute these issues. It's, it's, we have due process rules that the, the property owner has to be, um, you know, notified of what's going on. And, um, so it's not always easy, especially when you have property owners that don't live in the city. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't do it. We can do it. It's just sometimes it takes a lot of resources and with Virginia, we've, we've, we have done those resources. We've, we've, there's a lot of staff time that's been put into, you know, that property. I know the, the neighbors are frustrated and I understand that. Um, but as, you know, cities, sometimes it takes us, takes us a while to move. But we are moving.
And for the, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask for those, for those properties that, um, are, uh, are rented where, um, are, are part of this, the, the concern, the three hundred of them that someone mentioned that are actually here in El Segundo, what would happen to those properties? Let's say we take it off the market. There's an exclusive ban for short-term rentals in this community. So now what do those homeowners and landlords do?
Long-term rentals.
Long-term rentals. You just get, exactly. Right?
You're still gonna make a lot of money.
Absolutely.
I mean rentals are, are...
Absolutely.
Pretty highly priced and you could rent out a room in your house. You could rent out three rooms in your house and you could still make a significant amount of money that way.
Exactly.
I hear the people who have spoken and I have great empathy for you. You know, I, I live on a block that has one of these rentals and, and I really have not been affected by it. I'm aware that it's there, but I don't live right next door to it, so I have not really been affected. But I hear my neighbors and I know that they have. And I really sympathize with you and empathize with you, and I think it's not right. And if someone owns a piece of property that they are not using, they have every right to do a long-term rental. I think it's an imposition on the residents and I don't think it is conducive to the kind of community that we wanna live in. So for myself, I would like the city to investigate as, as thoroughly as it can ordinances that would prevent short-term rentals, period. And I know it's complicated. You know, this is not a fast process. And I know when the city is talking about, we, you know, just writing the party house ordinance was an ordeal. And now we can say, okay, so you have to give them a citation. Then how do you deliver the citation if they don't live in town, if they don't live in state? It's complicated. And I, I know that if we pass something to request the city to look into this and write something, it's not gonna be fast. It, it's gonna take time. But, um, I believe that we need to proceed with this.
Well, and to Carol's point, um, I guess to manage expectations, first of all, I just, my heart goes out to you people. We've seen you come up here and talk for, it's been a year, you know, a year and a half, two years, three years. So I, I, I really understand your frustration. As far as managing expectations, the party ordinance has been approved. It's, it's been implemented. Citations have been made. My guess is if we, as a city outlaw short-term rentals, it's gonna be the exact same situation. People are gonna continue to post them. They're gonna continue to rent them out. The city will give citations. Um, you know, some people may shut their houses down right away. Other people won't. And so I guess I'd like to understand those expectations because my hope, when I, when I heard about the, the party house ordinance, my, my wish was that that would solve a lot of the problems that were happening here. I also very much understand Mr. Kelly's point of view, uh, because I too use Airbnb and, and I'm not a party guy. I travel on business. It's nice to have a kitchen. It's nice to be able to cook. I don't think I'm the guy that shows up at the Virginia house and drinks beer all night. I'm just not that guy. Um, so I understand the, that there's a good side of it in some places. Um, and so, you know, I, I hate to shut down the nice people like Mr. Kelly that's actually doing, being responsible about how he uses them. So what are the expectations of the party house ordinance? And should we expect as time goes by that these problems are gonna be solved? Or is it gonna be exactly the same situation if we say there's no short-term rental? And two years from now, these people have these exact same problems because the short-term rental people got citations, but they haven't done anything to fix it.
So, again, you know, the, the loud and unruly gathering ordinance allows the city to issue citations. The hope was that issuing the citations would get the property owner or the responsible party's attention uh, and they would change their conduct. Sometimes that works. The, the fines are steep, twenty-five hundred per violation. Hopefully some people will be deterred and there's always a handful of people that might not be. So again, uh, the city has other options. Um, these would be open code enforcement cases if we're getting complaints from the neighbors. You know, I would encourage people to contact code enforcement in addition to the police department. And, um, the city has a variety of different ways to handle code enforcement cases, public nuisance laws, uh, civil action, criminal action. Some of those are more complicated than others. So, um, if the problems, you know, rise to a certain level, um, the city can take action. And again, it's a matter of establishing evidence, so we need people to help us, um, you know, be witnesses, provide declarations because we can't just go to court and say, you know, there were people that were complaining about it. The judge is gonna say, well, where's your proof? And if it's a criminal action, then it's beyond a reasonable doubt. So we have a very high standard that we have to prove.
Which, if I understand correctly, would be the exact same situation if we shut down short-term rentals and people continued to rent out their houses. Meaning, meaning it's the burden, we, we would need, as, as citizens, we'd have to document that there's a problem. Just like we have to with the party house.
Your concern is, Jay, that if we, that if we say no moratorium complete, no short-term rentals, people aren't gonna stop renting their houses. That's your, that's, but I think that's where you're headed.
That is, that is my concern. You see it in Santa Monica. I'm sure it happens in Hermosa.
Right.
And I, I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting that we don't shut down short-term rentals. I just am trying to manage expectations.
Right. We still will have to reopen public comments. So give, give us a chance to work through the, through this here, okay? Thank you.
What, what, um, what I would, as a solution to this, I think what we would do is whatever the planning commission's recommend, recommendation is, whether that's tonight or some other meeting, it's up to you. Whatever we take to the city council, the city council will hear, um, you know, the, the planning commission's position on it. And then as part of that, you know, if, if, for example, if the, if the city council was to say, we wanna expressly ban short-term rentals, then I think staff's next question would be to the council, how much resources do you wanna put into that? Because there's a difference between passing an ordinance and then waiting for the city to receive complaints and then respond to those complaints like a code enforcement case. That's very different from the city council saying, not only do we wanna pass this rule that expressly bans them, but we wanna actually devote city resources to actually proactively banning them. And that's a very different situation because we're talking about more staff, more, um, more time, more dollars.
Well, in all fairness though, Mr. King, even if we didn't or we did allow short-term rentals, the, 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 the city, the, the, the resources are huge, no matter which way
Absolutely.
we recommend that city council approve or disapprove.
Absolutely.
Right? So it's, either way, it's a really big issue.
Right.
That will take a lot of enforcement. Cause there are people that are just not going to, either we say as straight moratorium, expressly say no, then you're gonna have people that are gonna still continue to rent out and then we have to go after that. Or if we do say and we, within the guidelines is, we would then begin to have to, to set forth some guidelines, then no matter what, you're, you're gonna still continue to get the, the concerns that have come before this commission tonight.
Absolutely.
You have to go after.
Absolutely. And, you know, regulating them and having, um, boundaries or, you know, for example, requiring owner occupancy, limiting it to a certain number of days per year, um, that, that would be also very, you know, really difficult to enforce as well.
Well, just getting a, a permit to do it, to, to, to even just that in of itself is huge.
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. You haven't said anything. Go ahead.
The same kind of burden of, somebody still has to police that, so I would love at a minimum to see a permit, a business license, owner occupied at a minimum, but I think no matter what you do, to your point, it has to be policed and it's gonna require resources that are currently being committed to something that's been going on since what, June, July, the party host ordinance and party house ordinance, and it's still being resolved. So to Jay's point, I would just wanna set expectations that we can restrict it to the fullest degree and it's not gonna mean that next week there isn't gonna be somebody there. And I also have so much empathy. It sounds horrible. I'm, you know, a mother of three small boys. I would in no way wanna live next door to that and I would wanna do anything to prohibit that. So I feel for you tremendously and would wanna do something today that could eliminate that for you. But a ban still wouldn't prohibit that because it still has to be policed. There's a ban in Hermosa. There's a ban in Manhattan Beach. You can go on VRBO and Airbnb and pull up dozens of places. And so it just, that's, that, it's not gonna happen overnight.
I, 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 I think we've talked about this. And I would like to recommend to the city council that they write a very strict no short-term rental ordinance with very high fines for people who break that ordinance. Because I think money is what the driving force here. And if they get hit with a five thousand dollar fine every time there is a verified violation, it might wake some people up. And I know it's gonna take a long time to write something like that and it's gonna take a long time to get everything enforcement lined up and we may have to go to court. But if other large cities are going to court to try to ban this kind of activity, they're going to set a legal precedent. And hopefully we can ride on their coattails. And I, you know, it'll take time, but I think if we don't start now, we're never gonna get there.
Yeah, we have lots of really good hotels here in El Segundo.
That's right. And we've used their TOT tax, so yes, helps us all out.
So, Mr. King, the, the, the party ordinance, or you described a situation where if council gave you, gave city staff a, a, a direction to increase man-hours, have they done that for the party house ordinance? Or are they just saying, you know what, do a citation and let's see what happens?
Yeah, I, I don't think that, the, that question was really presented to the council, but I think there was an expectation by the council that it would be implemented. And I can tell you, the minute that the ordinance was implemented, it became effective, staff was, you know, talking about how are we gonna implement this? Let's get it done. I think what might, the, the, the issue about staff resources in my mind was if, if the city council were to expressly ban it. And what does that mean? Does that mean that it's complaint-driven, that we just wait to receive complaints and then we act on it? Or does the council wanna even be more proactive where we actually have staff monitoring websites? You know, initiating a legal action based on what they're seeing on, on the website. And that's very different from what our standard code enforcement
Sure.
process is now.
It's a lot of resources.
I mean, Sam oversees, you know, code enforcement. If you have questions about code enforcement, he would be the person. But, you know, there's a, there's a variety of different ways to, you know, are we gonna be reactive or we're gonna be proactive on this?
I do have one question. I don't wanna derail us in a different direction, but on the ADUs, is there a limit on, uh, long-term, short-term rentals specifically, ADU or guesthouse? It sounds like the other issue is a terrible long-term tenant and is there anything related to that?
There, there's, uh, there's no limitation or, or minimum stay for ADUs.
So they'd be included in ordinance that would be written that there are no short-term rentals?
Well, if there was a ban on short-term rentals, it would apply as to ADUs as well as to everything else. Yeah.
And a point, if, if there's a large enough fine and enough of those fines are collected, that's going to help pay for someone to monitor the rentals.
And what's considered short-term rental? Less than thirty days?
Thirty days or less, or less than thirty days.
Okay. So, do I need to make a motion? Or is there more discussion?
Michelle. You need to speak up. This is the time. It needs to happen.
To me, the consistency with the incidences here are that none of them are owner occupied. So my only experience with this is not renting myself, but knowing people who rent when they're on vacation, they rent their home to cover the costs associated with their family. So I do have some degree of concern of just eliminating altogether people who are good users.
I get that, but I can also say probably those people that are your friends, that might be Aspen and it might be Newport Beach or it might be, you know,
I wish my friends had that much money all the time.
You know what I mean? It may be more, it could be Palm Springs, Palm Desert. It could be an area that, that is, um, far more either, um, more vacation-suited, more transient, not really a community like we are.
And I'm talking about friends who live in El Segundo who rent their home when they go to the east coast to visit family for two weeks.
Like a home exchange or something, yeah.
Well, yeah. Except it's on VRB, it's on VRB, except we're getting paid.
Okay, yeah.
But, and I do have, you know, some concern about, again, just something blanketed that affects good users as well. While also empathizing.
I think that's true. So a decision then would have to be made, I mean, as far as the vetting process, you were sort of back to this cyclical thing about how do you actually, how do you get, how do you get good people that...
Well, they're all owner occupied. I mean, people who are good users are, live there and could live there.
But they're not there when they rent.
No.
Right, no.
No. They rent their house out while they're gone. These are, you're talking about people that live here.
People I know who use it, you know, effectively and like the family on Hillcrest who are using it and are not receiving complaints and there's, there are no issues. So all of these homes, the owners are, are gone. They're not living there. It's not their family home. They don't have the same, they don't carry the same degree of care because those aren't their neighbors that they see every day. They're out of the state, they're out of the country.
No, but from the, from the standpoint of your friends that, that do post their, post their home, they'll take a family vacation and be gone for two weeks. And then they've vetted somebody to come in and rent their own home.
Absolutely. Cause it has all their things, all their things.
All their things are there. And then they'll do that, rent it for ten days or whatever to help subsidize the vacation.
And I cannot do that because I like my house way too much to share it with anybody else, but they, but they do do that.
Exactly.
Is it, is it possible that you can control who does the renting? Like in the case of Mr. Kelly, he does that himself. It's his own house versus a management company that doesn't care. They don't, they don't, they, they're, the, the management company has incentive to push as many people through as possible. It's exactly the opposite of Mr. Kelly's situation where he's trying to very carefully decide who's there.
I think that would be basically unenforceable.
What did you say, Mr. McClain?
I, a provision of that nature would be unenforceable for the city.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's, there's also room if, if, um... I don't know. Jay, what do you think?
It, it tears me apart. I mean, these poor people are, uh, putting up with a lot of crap. And, um, but I also know it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good income source for people that are using it responsibly. And so, uh, at this point, I would be for owner occupied if there was a way to enforce that. If there's not a way to enforce that, I don't, I, I, it's hard for me to get behind it.
Right.
Yeah, because I have heard, and I don't know that for sure, but that renters who, short-term renters who go into a home are told, if somebody comes to the door asking for the owner, just say he's not home. um are told, if somebody comes to the door asking for the owner, just say he's not home.
Yeah, I've heard that.
There are a lot of ways around it.
Yeah.
Sure.
A lot of ways around it, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
Want to make a motion?
I made a motion.
Do we have a second?
Will you say the motion again?
Yeah, I make a, I make a motion that we recommend to the city council that all short-term rentals are banned in the city of El Segundo and that there are significant financial penalties for those people that break that ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Okay, it is.
If I may, before you vote.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McLean. Excuse me.
Should you hear from the audience rather than the city?
No, not at this time.
Public hearing, public hearing's been closed.
So I I want to clarify a point about the motion. This is a motion giving direction to staff to prepare an ordinance, draft ordinance that will come back to this body.
And will come back to planning commission.
Because you have to act on the ordinance that we draft um to make a recommendation to the council. So the wording of your, of your um motion is, or should be modified to say direct staff to prepare a draft ordinance to do as you said.
So modified.
Okay.
And if, before we vote, if I were going to make a motion with a different context, I guess, would that be done now or?
Yeah, I think we have to, now that there's been a motion, a second, the, we need to take a vote on that particular motion.
And is there, sorry, an opportunity to create double work for staff and run parallel ordinances?
There is, um but that would be another motion
That could happen after this one.
with other direction to staff. And if it gets a majority, we could.
Fair enough.
I would like to hear what Michelle has to say. This is a really important thing.
I would make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance that requests owner occupancy in a certain number of of days, owner occupied, and limits the um the number of days that a property can be rented and potentially looks into a business license and a short-term rental license, revenue generation for the the city, which simultaneously addresses the issue of bad users.
Right, so I think probably the good way to handle this is that whether the maker of the motion wants to amend the original motion to also.
I'd like to vote on my motion.
Okay, so I I I don't think you can do a friendly amendment to the original motion. Um, you know, keep in mind that if staff is going to prepare an ordinance, bring it back to the planning commission, this is not necessarily the last decision that's going to be made. And ultimately, it'll go to the city council. And you all know that you're making a recommendation to the council. That doesn't mean that the council necessarily going to follow that recommendation.
As we've seen in the past.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate comment, but part of me feels like if there's a way to create two simultaneous ordinances and present it to council that way, I think that if this ordinance is presented to council, we very well may see it come back and kick around and it just lengthens the process.
But what's going to happen is they're going to prepare the ordinance that I prepared. It'll come back to us at our next meeting.
Open for discussion.
Okay.
If we want to.
So, we have a motion and a second. And now we're voting all those in favor of Carol's motion as detailed by Mr. McLean. We'll say aye.
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 Nay.
Three, one. And then this would be, and so the motion is passed uh to direct staff. And then would there be an opportunity to make an additional motion? At this time, Michelle could make a motion.
Yes.
I would direct, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance with heavy regulations such as owner occupancy um for a certain number of months out of the year, limited days for rental, business tax, business license, short-term rental permit.
So we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second? And no second.
And the motion dies.
Motion denies, okay. All right, um it will come back before planning commission, Michelle, so this conversation can continue at that time.
Sounds good.
And uh.
If I may, just for um the benefit of the public, um this is not a continued hearing. Uh we're, we closed the public hearing. So whenever the ordinance comes back, it will be noticed again. And so everybody will have opportunity to to show up again and testify before that hearing as well. And um if you haven't already given us your contact email address or so forth, please do that and we'll send you a special invitation.
You know, I'd like to make one comment. Um I think, David, you mentioned that people should contact code enforcement as well as the police when they have com- com- uh complaints. How do they do that? How do they not notify code?
Well, I could, I could certainly give the um, all the people who are here, um the code enforcement number, but uh what what's actually been happening is the actual timing of the unruly gathering is actually happening on weeknights, in some cases Friday night, or it's happening on weekends when code enforcement is not available. So we really asked that, that we've, we've communicated with the police department thoroughly. Uh we asked that you please contact the police department. They, they've been in continuous communications with us, with the city attorney's office. And um they know um, they know to go out and and check for the unruly gathering. And um when it's been confirmed, they uh they notify us, they notify the city attorney and the appropriate actions are taken. So it's really important that you contact the police department.
Okay.
Thanks, Sam. So the police notify code. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. Uh item number J, report from uh planning and building safety director.
I I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh planning commissioners comments, can we start with you, Jay?
Yeah, you know, I really hope this party ordinance thing works. I mean, it seems to me that that is the root of a lot of this stress. And if it doesn't work, then I'm concerned that banning uh short-term rentals isn't going to work either. So my hope is that the planning or the party ordinance works.
Very good. Um I I feel exactly the same way and I have a lot of sympathy for the people who haven't been negatively affected by the short-term rentals. And I understand the position of the people on Hillcrest Street and it's an income stream for you. But there's another source of income in renting your place out full-time. And so I I just don't think that this is a way to maintain the small-town atmosphere of El Segundo.
Thanks, Carol. I'm sort of of that ilk. I'm all about this community. Um it is a pro, it is a shame that one bad apple, and I mean that in a general term, spoils the whole bunch for really nice people like Mr. Kelly. It's a, it's a, it concerns, it concerns me so much, I'm going to go home and smoke a joint, I think.
I love you.
Make, make sure it's CBD. Oh, no, no, you can do it. It's legal, that's right.
Here, here. I would just like to say I love Brenda's comment the most of the whole night.
All right, I think we are at a German thank goodness and thank everybody for this evening.
Yes, thanks for your patience. Yes, thanks for your patience.
Well, they're going to have to do that for the short-term.
Yeah.